I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 18th, 2020 work session of the Henrico County School Board. This meeting is being virtually held virtually due to the Commonwealth's State of Emergency issued on March 12, 2020, which was extended indefinitely by Governor Norlem on May 26, 2020, and which makes it in practical unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. The meeting is being livestreamed on the HCPS website. Notice of today's meeting was provided via Public Service Announcement on Friday, June 12, 2020. As announced in our meeting, most recent meetings, the School Board is addressing only matters the Board considers the essential business of the school division. And all votes will be by roll call and recorded in the minutes. The Board Member needs to lead the meeting. I ask that you verbally note that and subsequently verbally note when you return. Board Members, do you have any questions about this process? If not, I'll begin by taking a roll call. When I call your name, please verbally indicate your presence. Ms. Atkins? Ms. Canceler?
Present.
Ms. Ogborne?
Present.
Ms. Shea?
Present.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that a quorum of the School Board is present. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I entertain a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda?
Still moved.
They're moved by Mrs. Canceler. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mrs. Shea. I'll now proceed with the roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Canceler?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda is our closed session. In order for us to discuss matters covered under items A1, A2, and A8 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, the assignment appointment performance disciplining and release of contract for specific School Board employees, including the evaluation of the superintendent, a request for religious exemption from compulsory attendance, consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters related to holding electronic meetings of the School Board pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. I would now like to entertain a motion and a second to enter into closed session. Do I have a motion and a second?
Still moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mrs. Shea?
No.
Ms. Ogborne?
Yep.
Thank you so much. Now proceed the roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Canceler?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, we will now go into closed session. For our listening and viewing audience, we will reconvene the work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. We want to reconvene the Henrico County School Board meeting. First to do so, I want to certify our closed session. Can I have a motion certifying closed session in a second, please?
Still moved by Ms. Shea.
They're moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Ms. Canceler. I will now proceed with the roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Canceler?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, the closed session has been certified. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the first item, I'm requesting that the School Board release from compulsory attendance student case number 20-21-Re-1 based on bona fide religious beliefs. And as always, names of students are protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you so much. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Still moved.
They're moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Ms. Canceler. I will now proceed with the roll call vote. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Canceler?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, the request for religious exemption from compulsory education has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. For the next item, I'm recommending the School Board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Can I receive a motion and a second, please?
Still moved.
They're moved by Ms. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mrs. Atkins. I will now proceed for the roll call vote. Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Canceler?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, the administrative appointments have been approved. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you. The Board has just approved Rochelle Bourgeois, Associate Principal Ash Elementary, Ashley Pride, Associate Principal Baker Elementary, Danielle Sims, Associate Principal Colonial Trail Elementary, Robert Weincoff, Associate Principal Dunbarton Elementary, Carrie Reeves, Associate Principal Gayton Elementary, Nicole Frunt, Associate Principal Johnson Elementary, Charles Riddle, Associate Principal Ratcliffe Elementary, Leila Marshall, Associate Principal Shady Grove Elementary, and Ashley Council, Associate Principal Short Pump Elementary. And I'd also like to share with the Board a short visual PowerPoint to introduce the administrative appointees that you approved at our last meeting, who would typically come in person to be recognized. So we will do this virtually. So I would like to introduce you to, since it's ready, Lauren Bischof will be the next principal of Baker Elementary School. For the last three years, Ms. Bischof has been the resource teacher and associate principal of Baker Elementary. While at Baker, she has helped increase teacher capacity by providing high-quality professional development, thus continuing to grow teacher capacity and helping the school remain fully accredited. Ms. Bischof has also served as a presenter for Henrico County's Next Generation Leadership Academy, or NGLA, presenting on leadership, cultural responsiveness, trauma-sensitive schools, and promoting sustainable change. The next principal of Laburnum Elementary will be Nicole Boone. She has served as principal for the past three years at Chalkley Elementary School in Chesterfield County. Through her instructional leadership, Chalkley ES, a Title I school, is fully accredited and has been able to enjoy Tier One status for all academic areas and subgroups. Ms. Boone has also created a positive culture with robust parent and community involvement at Chalkley ES, and she will surely do the same at Laburnum Elementary School. Carrie Fellows is moving up from Associate Principal at Ratcliffe Elementary to Principal at Mayford Elementary. Over the years, Ms. Fellows has successfully served in the classroom or as part of administration at multiple schools across Henrico County. At each school and Ratcliffe ES, Ms. Fellows supported the principal's efforts that resulted in the school attaining and sustaining full accreditation. She has high expectations for students and ensures the scaffolding is in place to help them meet expectations. Ellen Guidry will be transitioning from Associate Principal to Principal of Shady Grove Elementary. She comes to the principalship from a career in education having served in diverse roles. Ms. Guidry has served as a preschool teacher, a reading interventionist, a Leadership Institute Coordinator, and an assessment specialist for the Virginia Department of Education, a Director of Testing, and a Director of Elementary before joining a large school division, Henrico County Public Schools, as an Associate Principal. As of July 1, Shondell Edwards Hamlin will be the principal of Fair Oaks Elementary School. Ms. Hamlin is currently the Associate Principal of Dunbarton Elementary, prior to which she served in the same role at Adams Elementary. Before entering administration, Ms. Hamlin spent eight years as an exceptional education teacher, and through the years, she has learned the value of building positive relationships with students, families, and the community. This will ultimately lead to success for students. The next principal of Trevette Elementary will be Ariana Neal. For the past four years, she has been a member of the administrative team at Johnson Elementary, first as the resource teacher before becoming the Associate Principal. Ms. Neal has assisted in building a strong family and community partnership through initiatives such as the Johnson Elementary Step Team, the Jaguar Jamboree, and student-led conferences. She is a student-focused instructional leader. Paige Smith is excited to become the principal of Short Pump Elementary on July 1. Ms. Smith has four years of administrative experience at Short Pump Elementary and 17 years of teaching experience. Over her career, all of which has been in Henrico County public schools, Ms. Smith has served in numerous roles from classroom teacher to gifted resource teachers at both the elementary and secondary level, to resource teacher and associate principal. She's excited to remain in Henrico County for her next career step. Erica Browdy has been promoted from elementary school principal to middle school principal. She will be leaving her current position as the principal of Trevette Elementary School to be the next principal of Wilder Middle School beginning July 1. During Dr. Browdy's first year as principal of Trevette, the school saw the largest increase in Henrico County public schools for all core academic areas with a 16% gain in reading SOL pass rates and a 14% gain in math SOL pass rates. Her desire for academic excellence is evident in everything she does. Joining Henrico County Public Schools from the Caroline County Public School Division is Darren Thompson. He will serve as the principal of Verina High School, bringing experience from the middle and high school level. Mr. Thompson is currently the principal at Caroline County Middle School and previously served as the principal at Thomas Jefferson High School for Richmond Public Schools. While principal at Thomas Jefferson High School, SOL scores rose by 15% in English, 5% in science, and 8% in history just during his first year as principal there. As student achievement increased, the school saw a decrease in student discipline in fractions as well. His track record is impressive. Dale King was appointed as the next principal of the Hermitage Ace Center. Mr. King currently serves as the Associate Principal at Hungry Creek Middle School. During his tenure at Hungry Creek, he has created structures and opportunities for students to apply the six Cs and engage in deeper learning. Mr. King's previous experiences include being the Associate Principal at Queokahson Middle, an Assistant Principal at Wilder Middle, an administrative aide, and CTE teacher at Rolfe Middle. He has come home to CTE. Dr. Stacy Austin will transition to the position as Director of Elementary School Education in July 2020. Currently the principal of Shady Grove Elementary School, he has worked in a variety of school divisions from Petersburg to Goochland to Chesterfield to Henrico, spending 12 years in the classroom and 14 years as an elementary principal. In addition, he spent three years as Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Over the course of his career, he has a proven track record of being student-centered and innovative. Mrs. Candace Wilkerson will also transition to the position as Director of Elementary School Education in July of 2020. She has nine years of experience as an elementary principal and 16 as an elementary classroom teacher. Six of those years were at Adams Elementary in Henrico County. For the last four years, she has served as the principal of Fair Oaks Elementary. Prior to returning to Henrico, she was the principal in Louisa County, where she helped her staff and community transition to a mobile campus and then back to a building after an earthquake made her school uninhabitable. At the same time, she moved the school to full accreditation. This is the result of her laser-like focus on instruction. Dr. Deah Champ will begin her new role as Director of Middle School Education in July 2020. Dr. Champ currently serves as the principal of Wilder Middle School. She has previously served as principal at Dunbarton and J.G. Henning Elementary, leading both schools to full accreditation. She served as an education specialist for school improvement and as an assistant principal at a middle school and an alternative K-8 school. Her strong focus on instruction and her strive for excellence will serve our middle schools well. Anne Marie Sealy will be stepping in as the Director of School Quality on July 1, 2020. She's been the principal at Verina High School for six years, and Verina has regained, under her leadership, full accreditation in 2015 and has been accredited since then. Prior to going to Verina, she spent two years as the Associate Principal at Pocahontas Middle, and before that was an education specialist for secondary English and reading. Her leadership experiences have given her a unique perspective on quality, and she has shared a strong vision for moving the department and the division forward. Our new Director of Transportation is Jim Ellis. For the past three years, Mr. Ellis served as the Assistant Director of Transportation for Loudoun County Public Schools. Prior to transitioning to Loudoun, Mr. Ellis worked for 10 years for Chapel Hill and Carboro City Schools, serving as the Director of Transportation, Transportation Operations Manager, Fixed Asset Materials and Equipment Manager. Mr. Ellis has already found a place to live and is on his way into settling into Henrico. So we certainly welcome our new appointees, and while we weren't able to introduce you to them in person, hope that this virtual introduction to our new administrators will serve the purpose temporarily.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. I look forward to each of them doing a tremendous work for our division and impacting our students as well as their families. Next, we want to move to our approval of hearing officers.
That's right. I'm seeking the School Board's approval for a list of hearing officers for employee grievances for the 2020-21 school year. Seeking approval for hearing officers, Sally Andrews, Jean Braxton, Patricia Johnson, and Patricia Leary.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. Board Members, may I please have a motion and a second for the approval?
Still moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Canceler. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mrs. Shea. I'll now proceed with the roll call vote. Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Canceler?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, the hearing officers have been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Next, I'm recommending that the Board receive a brief overview of our Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding, also known as CARES Act funding, prior to my request for asking you to accept those funds as they've been allocated to Henrico County schools in the amount of $9,446,667.43. So we'll start with a review, and I believe Mr. Sorenson is here to provide that.
Actually, it's going to be me.
It's fine, I apologize.
No problem. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. I would like to provide a review of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, otherwise known as CARES Act funding. The CARES Act was signed into law on March 27, 2020, and contained three separate funding packages. The part of the CARES Act that I will focus on today is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, also known as the ESSER Fund. The CARES Act grant award for Henrico County schools is slightly over $9.4 million. I would like to note that this is slightly more than initially reported due to an adjustment in the calculation made by the Virginia Department of Education to account for the state level set aside. One of the provisions of the grant is that divisions must provide the equitable participation of students, teachers, and other educational personnel in private not-for-profit schools located within the school division's boundaries. As such, the school division informed the private not-for-profit schools of their ability to access CARES funding and provided consultation over the last few weeks so that each eligible school could make an informed decision about participation. Each school's share is based on the proportion of students relative to the total number of K-12 students enrolled in the private participating schools and Henrico County public schools. The CARES Act ESSER funds are emergency relief funds intended to address the impact of COVID-19 on elementary and secondary schools. The reimbursement period for public schools goes back to March 13, 2020, and extends until September 30 of 2022. As mentioned previously, the funding includes equitable services for students and teachers in not-for-profit private schools, but they may only use the funds after they have an approved plan. ESSER funds can be used for such purchases as hardware, software, connectivity, assistive technology, and adaptive equipment. The funds may also be used to support mental health needs, meal distribution, and services under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And the funds may also be allocated for summer learning opportunities as well as maintaining staffing levels. The funds granted to Henrico County public schools will be reduced by $541,926.07, which is the proportional share of our CARES Act funding for the not-for-profit private schools that have chosen to seek their allocation of equitable funding, minus a 10% fee that we can maintain for having to manage the purchasing inventory and basically administration and oversight of the CARES Act. The control of all funds, even those allocated to the participating private schools, remains with Henrico County public schools. The order of all materials and services must go through Henrico County public schools' purchasing, and Henrico County public schools may not reimburse private schools for any materials or services that they have already purchased to address COVID-19 concerns. Any materials ordered for the private schools will remain the property of Henrico County public schools and will be included in our inventory. Of course, that refers to capital-type purchases. The not-for-profit private schools were required to tell us their intent to participate by last Friday, June 12. For schools that had indicated that they intended to participate but failed to submit the formal paperwork, received a final reminder and a firm deadline of this morning to submit the formal paperwork or forego access to the equitable funding. Of those nonprofit schools participating, they will have to submit their orders to us by July 1. This just summarizes the timeline and includes the acceptance of the CARES Act funds by the School Board today.
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen. So you've had an opportunity to review the CARES Act information, as I am seeking, again, your acceptance of those funds to Henrico County public schools. Do you have any questions related to the CARES Act?
Ms. Atkins, do you have any questions?
Do I do?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Canceler?
I would like to ask if these funds are going to be adequate to cover our needs, especially as we're looking at increased mental health needs of our students and teachers, staff, as well as additional funding potentially for some of our Title I employees to be able to still work this summer and assist family-community engagement now outside of the regular school year? Do we have enough funding for those needs?
So I think when you think about the purpose of the CARES Act, which is certainly to help school divisions meet the financial needs related to things that were responses to COVID immediately upon school closure and that will be continued need. When we evaluate our needs in their entirety as a school division, the amount of needs certainly far exceeds the approximate $9 million that we're receiving. So we targeted, given the nature of expenses that could be covered with this funding, we targeted what we saw as the most immediate need, which is the ability to prop up instruction and do so whether it be virtual or face-to-face, and mitigate some of the learning loss as a priority. But you're absolutely right, the needs that we have as a school division well extend beyond that, including being able to provide mental health supports and so many other services to our students, which included having school nutrition service workers from day one operate even outside their usual work hours. And so the division has assumed that cost. It certainly has had an impact on our operational budget. And so, given that the CARES Act only goes so far in mitigating those needs, we continue to have to be very careful with our budget strategy and look to leveraging other funds. For example, the Education Foundation worked to get a lot of private donations to help us supplement our feeding program above school nutrition. So I think we continue to have to look to leverage funds from donors and creatively leverage our operational budget, our current budget, as we can to meet those needs. So I know that's not a specific answer, other than to say this does not cover all our needs, and we do have needs beyond this, that we will have to consider ways to fund.
Given our budget constraints during this time and the quarterly appropriations that we will be receiving, is there a way to ask or request this funding, additional funding, as you work together with the county manager? Is there a way for us to request additional funding?
Yeah, I think that's a great point. It'll be important for us to keep our counterparts in the county government well-informed of what our needs are and how we're meeting them and where we still have gaps, so that we're very transparent and where we're still struggling to meet those gaps. We understand that there are additional CARES grant monies out there, either given directly to localities and governments for broad uses in the community, which can include schools, as well as some additional school-related CARES funds that have been made available to VDOE on an application basis. So we'll be doing anything we can to leverage those additional sources to help fill in the gaps.
Thank you. That's all, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Canceler. Ms. Ogborne?
I'll just follow up with a quick question for Dr. Cashwell. The additional funds you mentioned, could those be used for staffing? Do we know that yet? I know we're constrained in what we can use this for, but I just mean additional personnel to help with the additional cleaning, the additional instructional needs that we're going to have with having to have smaller class sizes. Are we constrained in any way for uses in that regard?
Well, certainly, there is underneath this current CARES Act funding some room to do that, to use funds, leverage funds in that way. I mean, one of the challenges of funding positions with one-time grant money is when you know that position's going to need to be ongoing. But certainly, we know there'll be some limited opportunities, such as extending our abilities to clean, maybe it's part-time, part-time staff and that sort of thing. And I would imagine some of those other CARES fund sources, such as that the localities received, as well as some of the newer CARES funds that we've been made aware of that the VDOE will make available, will have some use cases like that. And if that's the case, we'll certainly work to try to leverage those funds for those purposes.
Because I, and just one follow-up real quick, is I would imagine that we're going to have to require masks and other protective gear. Well, do we know yet whether these funds are adequate to provide, to cover those costs? I know that, for example, if we were to work with the county for ordering those supplies, we might get a more financially lucrative deal for us, so to speak, but I'm just curious about the PPE.
Yeah, that's a great question. And in fact, some of the county government's CARES funds are being used for that purpose, and they've included the school division in an initial purchase. And so while it's hard for us to gauge our exact need for PPE, we certainly know we'll need at least some supply of masks to meet staff needs. It's still undetermined as to whether it'll be a daily requirement for students and that sort of thing, but want to make sure we have a good supply of PPE, including the temperature scanners and those sorts of supplies that we know we'll need. So we were appreciative to be included and having some of those supplies covered through that purchase with the county government.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Shea?
Thank you. I just wanted to affirm you in the school division in the choice to really concentrate these funds on what we think will be one-time or temporary funds as opposed to our costs as opposed to ongoing costs, because otherwise, we're going to find ourselves with continuing expenses but not continuing revenue in subsequent budget years and kind of continue to be in a deficit and trying to find cuts. So I appreciate your fiscal responsibility in spending these on more one-time allocations.
Thank you.
All right, so everyone is at an opportunity to ask questions. Can I entertain a motion and a second to accept the CARES Act funding, please?
Still moved.
They're moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Ms. Canceler. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Canceler?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, the CARES Act funding has been accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the next item, I'd like to provide the board an update on the school division's continued response and plans moving forward as it relates to our COVID-19 pandemic response. And Dr. Tygen, our chief of staff, has worked with all of our department leader, our Division of Leadership team members to compile an overview and updates that are relevant related to each of our main areas of operations. So, Dr. Tygen, I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. We do continue to work as a division leadership team on the issues that we are facing due to COVID. We'll start with operations. The safety and security staff continue to meet weekly with county departments to ensure there is no lapse in crisis service to Henrico citizens, to include Henrico students and staff. We want to ensure that any students having undergone a threat assessment and transitioning from elementary to middle school, or from middle school to high school, are having a warm handoff of their records from one school to another. This will ensure that the new school can continue with the interventions placed by the former threat management team. In facilities, maintenance and custodial personnel continue opening and closing the grab-and-go food preparation sites every day, and they also support the administrative teams and teachers during the distribution of students' belongings and during the staff year-end closure activities. All facilities personnel will begin summer cleaning of all the school facilities on June 15th. Technology has completed three phases of elementary Chromebook deployment and to date have issued over 6,000 Chromebooks to students who needed devices for virtual learning. They continue to maintain four tech hubs this summer. The hubs will be open from 8:30 to 10:30 Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, so teachers, students, and staff can continue to get techno- technological support. Technology secured more than 200 hotspots that can support families that need internet service during EdFlix Season 3 Summer Academy. We move on to school nutrition. The grab-and-go meals transitioned to a summer schedule this past Monday. Meals are being provided Monday through Thursday, with additional meals being provided on Thursday for Friday through Sunday. Several sites were shifted to better meet the needs of our families. And overall, over forty, 400,000 meals have been served since the start of the COVID closure. Community support. With the conclusion of our food distribution efforts at Richmond Raceway, we have provided over 12,000 food bags to our Henrico community. This includes support to partner pantries, as well as emergency bags provided directly to our schools. The collaborative effort was supported by the Henrico County General Government, Henrico Education Foundation, Henrico Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity Department, and our Family and Community Engagement Department. HAF continues to collaborate with Henrico County Schools to distribute funds donated by Robbins Foundations to families with significant economic needs. As a result, they have provided 400 families with a $500 one-time gift. Our Family Learning Series continues to be a place of connection and learning in our families and staff, and the Family Learning Series will continue through the summer months. Our community partnerships have been amazing throughout the process, and they continue to show up. There were different drives, food drives in late May and early June. School nurses. The school nurses continue to work with the 911 call center, and they are doing contact tracing anytime an employee tests positive for COVID-19. The nurses are no longer screening our workers. Robin Gilbert and Karen Criswell have trained supervisors to screen their own employees. The training involved face-to-face training, and they provided a video of the training and a written copy of the step-by-step instructions for future reference. They have also been collaborating with the Division of School Leadership to identify health and PPE needs for the fall return. And I'll stop and see if you have any questions before we move into EdFlix Season 4.
Ms. Consella?
Um, I would ju- I, the only comment I have is gratitude. Gratitude to our community partners, gratitude to everyone in operations, just gratitude for the whole team for continuing to go above and beyond to meet the needs of our students and, and communities. That's all I have.
Ms. Ogbonn?
Um, I will tack on to that, absolutely. I want to especially give a shout-out to the Henrico Education Foundation and the Robbins Foundation for their gift to our families and just helping with the needs of families. It's what it's all about, that's what we need to be doing more of. And Dr. Cashwell and I were able to go to the Dominion Club and be, and, and recognize them for their donation, as well to helping the, the food needs of families. And, and I'm just really, I'm like Chrissy, I'm really grateful for that.
Ms. Sheen?
Uh, thank you. My only question revolves around school nutrition, and I asked this question knowing that it might not be feasible, because there are a lot of regulations around our school nutrition programs and what they are permitted to do. But I know that example, for example, today, our food distribution sites pass out food not only for today, but also Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday while we are closed. Have we thought about, or is it possible to consider doing food distribution two days or three days a week and providing more food at a time to perhaps make that more accessible to some of our families that have transportation struggles and help solve some of our staffing challenges?
That's a great question, and it's something we've considered as we've looked at continuing our food service, knowing that staffing particularly could be of issue, but also recognize that when we limit the days, we might be limiting opportunities that a family could or could not actually make it to the food site. But I'd certainly defer to Dr. Tygen or Mr. Sorenson if they have additional insight on that question.
Some of the other, oh, well, I'll let Mr. Sorenson's coming on, I can let him answer.
Yeah, I would just add what Dr. Cashwell said. We, we, we had considered going to fewer days each week and giving out more meals, and we just thought that we'd be there more days for the families that could make it on cer- on certain days. But it's something that we can go back and look at and, and see if it's a better way to deliver the product.
And I think it's certainly a very feasible course going forward, should we encounter staffing issues beyond what we'd anticipate now if we were to have any need like that. We, you would certainly be right on that that's the direction we would likely move to be able to continue.
That's all I had, thank you.
Ms. Atkins?
Thank you, Chairman Cooper. I echo sentiments of gratefulness. One question I did have, Dr. Tygen, around our nurses and the equipment that our nurses are using. I've found a little bit of fluctuation between the thermometers that you use, that you hold to your head, and different other types of thermometers that are being used across the county. Can you speak to whether we would have funding to make sure that we have the more advanced thermometers? Not that the older thermometers don't do the job, but I do find that the more, the newer thermometers, one, it's easier, there's no touching. Can you just give me an update on sort of the more innovative equipment for our nurses?
Absolutely. Actually, in, in great foresight, Robin had ordered the touchless thermometers right at, right before we actually shut down, and she has had 72 thermometers on order, and she's received four to date in over three months. We have ordered additional thermometers through the Emergency Operations Center in hopes that the bulk purchasing between schools and the county will help get a more speedy response as far as delivery. And so absolutely, we have, we've looked into that, and, and the EOC has also done some research on the most practical way to do it, as far as some of the, some of the devices out there do not have a very long lifespan, and so really working to make sure we're ordering durable equipment that also meets our, meets our no-touch need.
Thank you for sharing that. I became aware of that through just a few nurses that, that were sharing feedback with me, and as far as sort of that backlog in these newer thermometers, I know that is not just here in Henrico County Public Schools. This is, this is something that may become a bit of an issue for us, as they are backlogged even in our healthcare facilities. So if there's anything that, that we can do as a, as a school board to raise awareness, to make sure that we get more of what we need, certainly before our upcoming school year, I just ask that, you know, you reach out to me if you need to, and, and I'm happy to share whatever information that I have, but I am aware that it's not just here at Henrico County with that backlog with those thermometers, and we are certainly going to need them to come into, you know, a little bit faster than what they are. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Dr. Cashwell, continue?
If there are no further questions on the first portions of the presentation, we'll continue on related to EdFlix and learning, current learning for summer, and how we're positioning ourselves going into the next school term. Dr. Tygen?
Yes. Our elementary, middle, and high schools ended the year by welcoming their teachers back to close out the school year and celebrated their students' accomplishments through virtual celebrations and moving-up ceremonies. And our seniors actually roared their engines and crossed the finish line at Richmond Raceway. From Exceptional Education, they collaborated with Family and Community Engagement to provide special education-specific offerings as a part of the Virtual Family Learning Series. Then they also developed a model for virtual extended school-year programming for students with disabilities, which includes access to direct instruction specifically related to students' disabilities. Our federal programs and foundational learning department collaborated with operations and Henrico County Police Department to provide Season 3 resources to current pre-K students to include four books and a backpack of manipulatives. And our SEALs team, the team of school-based mental health providers have created unique social-emotional lessons and activities based on the Castle Core Competencies for elementary season four, I mean, season three, including a full week, the week four, with a social-emotional learning focus. The Trauma Advisory Committee subgroup developed a proposal for next steps of the 2020-2021 school year, including professional learning for all employees, and they secured funding for a trauma-informed training module that will be delivered through safe schools to all staff. And the use of school implementation tool, as well as more in-depth data-driven recommendations for school and staffing, seeking to become trauma-informed. Professional learning and leadership and teacher, and teaching, learning, and innovation pulled forces to create a Henrico County Public Schools University, which is a collection of ongoing professional development and training opportunities for teachers as they work to improve synchronous and asynchronous delivery of content. Beginning July 6th of this year, Henrico County Public Schools staff members will have an opportunity to participate in a myriad of online professional learning workshops and courses designed to help them prepare for the 2020-21 school year. Using the HBCSU virtual campus, educators will be able to access courses organized by grade level for instructional content and by department for a broader selection of specialized learning sessions. And we'll move on to Season 4, so transitioning from summer school to return reopening schools. On Tuesday, June 9th, Governor Ralph, Ralph Northam announced a phase reopening of pre-K through 12 schools. The phase guidance was Virginia schools recommended that schools gradually resume in-person instruction while prioritizing the health and safety of students and staff. The school reopening phases are aligned with the existing Forward Virginia phases through which the state will progress by monitoring public health data and key measures on disease transmission, healthcare capacity, testing capacity, public health capacity, capacity to trace contacts of cases, and other relevant factors. We are currently in Phase 2, which only allows us to bring back students in pre-K through third grade, English language learners, and students with disabilities. We are planning, based on the assumption, we will be in Phase 3 by September. We realize the phase can change at any point to be more or less restrictive, and we will need to monitor what phase we are in and be prepared to adjust our plan accordingly. Virginia's guidance, which is aligned with the interim CDC guidance for schools, served as a recommendation for Virginia schools to mitigate risks associated with COVID-19. Community mitigation strategies, such as physical distancing, enhanced cleaning, et cetera, will be necessary across all phases to decrease the spread of COVID-19. While the state is providing guidance and flexibility, Virginia school systems like ours must ultimately decide for themselves on a comprehensive instructional plan. We are also required to submit a health medication plan at least 15 days prior to students returning to in-person and to, to the fall school year. For health mitigation, when our schools reopen in September for in-person instruction, it will look very different. The following safety measures are being prioritized for consideration in our reopening plan. Temperature checks will be required for staff each day. Six-foot social distancing will be required on buses, in classrooms, and in the hallways. Face masks will need to be worn by teachers when they must be closer than six feet to students. As far as instructional models for the fall, in May, you may recall, we announced five possibilities for a return to school for this year, which begins on September 8th. Our early interpretation of state guidelines has helped us narrow our focus. We now believe that a hybrid approach to learning, along with a fully virtual or parallel option, will be a significant part of our plans this fall. In hybrid learning, one portion of the student body will attend class on campus for a period of time, while another portion would learn remotely. The two groups might alternate days or weeks on campus to build a blended learning environment. Having fewer students on campus would make it easier to implement distancing guidelines. Parallel learning would be an option for all students based on parent choice. Students may opt into a fully virtual learning experience that runs parallel to the in-person instruction and will be, that is happening in our classrooms. There are currently three variations of the hybrid learning options, with Mondays having a half-day dedicated to extend learning opportunities using a needs-based rubric, and the other half-day would be used dedicated to teachers' professional development and planning time. The first option we are referring to is the full-week rotating, AAAABB option for our in-person learning. Students, the four remaining, the four, students would be in class for four days of one week or online. In the following week, those students from the same class would switch, with one, the other set becoming online, while the other, other set becomes in-person. The four days of the weeks that students are not attending school in person, they will be learning asynchronously. Work will be provided by the teacher, but the teacher will not be able to conference or meet synchronously with students or their families due to teaching a second group of students at this time. A second option, we're, we're referring to this as the alternate-day option for in-person learning. The four remaining, given that Mondays are, are for reserve for staff development and additional support for students, the four remaining days of the week, the students would be in-person every other day. The two days of the week that the students are not attending school in person, they will be learning online and asynchronously. Work will be provided by the teacher, but the teacher will, again, not be able to conference or meet synchronously with students or their families due to being engaged with teaching the second group in person. The third and final option, we are referring to this as the split-day A-B option for in-person learning. The four remaining days of the week and the student groups would be in-person either in the morning or the afternoon. The half-days that students are not attending school in person, they will be learning online and asynchronously, again, as the teacher would be teaching another group of students. Whether students are participating in a hybrid model or the parallel learning model, our social-emotional team, consisting of school counselors, psychologists, and social workers, will be available to support our students. We are planning to survey our staff and our families to gather feedback, and there, the surveys are planned to be sent, hopefully, next week to start gathering that information. We are working with the Henrico Education Foundation to provide at-cost daycare for our teachers that have elementary-age students. We are also considering a reduced tuition for students who live out of district but want to transfer their elementary-age students to HCPS for the 2020-21 year. There's no doubt- to HCPS for the 2020-21 year. There's no doubt that we are excited about welcoming our students back into the schools. This summer, the focus will be on reimagining our learning environments and learning experiences while building community confidence that our schools will continue to be healthy and a safe place for students to learn and grow. In closing, I would like to take this opportunity to personally congratulate the class of 2020. Our students graduated in the midst of a global pandemic in an uncertain world, and they have shown resiliency and grit. Their life's journey will continue to bring challenges and opportunities. We hope the class of 2020 continues to reach for the moon, for we know they will land among the stars. They are equipped to overcome any challenges that may come their way in life. Congratulations, class of 2020. HCPS wishes each of you the very best.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tiggen. I'm going to start with Ms. Shea.
Well, you sure you want to start with me? I, you know me, I got lots of thoughts. I'm going to try to be as concise with this as possible, but I think this is really one of the most pressing issues at our work session and that most of our parents are tuning in for. So I do have a handful of questions, particularly around school opening, Dr. Tiggen. The first one is just a point of clarity. Let me see if I can, hold on one sec. Oh, gosh, I'm a mess. You said in your piece about reopening schools that while the state is providing flexibility, guidance and flexibility, Virginia school systems like ours will ultimately decide for themselves. And then in the next portion during the health mitigation, that six-foot distancing will be required on buses and classrooms, et cetera. So where's, do we have, what part of that's flexible? Is it flexible just what it looks like in our schools? Or are these health mitigations flexible or required? Does that make sense?
Yes, they have, they have been presented as guidelines that are mandates, but they, you can go through your risk management to see if they're willing to take on the risk. And that's not somewhere where we want to be. That compromises the health and safety of our children.
And I think to your question, and Dr. Tiggen is right, you know, certainly the guidelines that were issued are based on a core set of safety practices that are based on, you know, best practices from health officials. And so we certainly want to ensure that in our reopening plans, we adhere to those. The flexibility comes in how we operationalize our schools and yet still maintain those best practices and safety. Anytime we start to reduce safety practices, we increase not only risk to our staff and our students, but our liability as a school division and ultimately could be negligent, given our responsibility to provide a safe environment for our students. And so while absolutely our goal has never wavered from wanting our students in our buildings, learning with us, that's ultimately the best-case scenario and the one we aspire to. We also understand that the recommendations coming from local and state health officials, those minimal guidelines are there for a reason, and those recommendations are best practices and safety given the health crisis. And so, you know, some flexibility has been suggested in if there's any backing off of some of those safety guidelines that a division would want to do due diligence and showing what other safety mitigation would replace that strategy. So I think an example of this might be the guidelines state that we should distance students six feet apart on the school bus, and that would be one per seat and likely even every other seat. However, we could say that we are allowing siblings, our students who live together in the same household, to sit together. So we've not followed or adhered to that guidance as it written, but our plan, our health plan, would indicate that we have a mitigation strategy that we believe that will help still keep folks safe. So because they're from the same family and they've been in the same home, they would be allowed to sit together. So I think that's an example of how local school divisions have flexibility versus the rigid guideline, but certainly don't anticipate, as we make our plans for reopening, that we would be eliminating safety practices that were part of the guidelines.
Thank you. I really appreciate your clarity on that. I know it has caused a lot of confusion in the parent community and the educator community on, on, on what really, how that really slushes out from the state. And so I really appreciate you giving some particular clarity around the school divisions, kind of thoughts and approach to that. So with, but with both of our plans, or all three of our plans that Dr. Tiggen presented were assuming essentially a 50% capacity in our schools. Have we, and this might be too, too science, too physics of me, but have we measured? Like, do we know? Have we done the calculations and figured out that we can fit 50% in our schools?
Yes. I mean, I think there's certainly even looking at our buses and the various configurations of our buses and the number of seats. You know, one of the driving factors will be as we survey and we plan to do that, our community is, you know, we're making some assumptions based on assuming a majority of our students wish to return, and then how would we accommodate that? And so knowing the total number of students will likely be serving can have an impact on our plan once we hear from students, because ultimately we're basing this off of the assumption that a majority of our students would want to return. And Dr. Tiggen, I think you wanted to add something. Go ahead.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
And then I'll just add from the Tuckahoe District, when I look at my schools in the Tuckahoe District, and I know this is similar in Miss Cunsellis District and some other places across the county, but we have some schools that don't have windows in the majority of their classrooms, like Quayacuson Middle School and Godwin High School. And that is really going to hamper the ventilation, which we know is an important piece. And so I don't know how that can be remedied or if it can be remedied, but I just encourage us to be thinking about those types of parameters as well and, and how our specific facilities will look as we look at various mitigations.
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning that. We'll take note of it. I think that's a great point. And so certainly while we've received the, the basic guidelines, we're going to want to continue to do what we can to even enhance safety for our students. And recognizing that ventilation may be an issue, we'll certainly look at whether it's feasible to introduce some other strategies to help with that.
And then my next set of questions and comments are around, kind of particularly our instructional plans as we look at going back. When I look at our various plans and assess our various plans, I'm really looking through four main lenses, which are, number one, the health and pride, health and safety of our staff and students, both physically and socially emotionally. Number two, the continuity of instruction that can be provided under that plan. Number three, the operational feasibility of the plan. And number four, how that looks in getting our families back to work. And so as I spent time this week thinking about the three various hybrid plans, it is my personal opinion that the alternating days, the A-B-A-B plan, is really the best combination of those four, looking at those four lenses, especially from an act, from a continuity of instruction standpoint and really looking, I think as our learners get younger, the meaningfulness of virtual learning, it's going to be really hard to give an entire week of asynchronous meaningful learning for our youngest learners. But I think a day, you know, on our alternating schedules, I think our teachers can do a wonderful job giving asynchronous learning that will provide continuity of instruction if we're on an A-B-A-B schedule. The operational feasibility of the half-day, to me, there are just so many hurdles. And then the, like I said, the alternating weeks, I have real concern about the continuity of instruction there, as well as when we look at getting our, getting our families back to work. Some working, some families with two working parents that I've talked to have said it would be much easier for them to plan their schedule around knowing that they have every Tuesday and Thursday in the office or every Wednesday and Friday as opposed to alternating weeks. And I think Dr. Cashwell and I had talked about this, but I think it's such a great idea that you had, I want you to share about the importance of having the entire family on the same schedule A or B and the solution that you had devised around that.
Yeah, I mean, certainly that's something we're going to be looking to our families to provide us input on, but we can imagine that, you know, we might, with any of these scenarios, divide groups of students, you know, by last name or something like that. And likely that would result in students from the same household being on the same schedule, but not always. So making sure we're individually communicating with and surveying our families as we get closer to implementation to determine their unique needs so that we can accommodate that.
I am wrapping up with just a handful, a couple more thoughts here. I really appreciate your, your realization that teachers cannot teach online and in-person at the same time. It's just not feasible. I think that's so important as we look at how is this really sustainable for our teachers and our staff. That's another reason why I think the A-B-A-B schedule is far superior to the alternating week, because I think with an A-B-A-B schedule, the teachers can plan two days of instruct in-person and two days of virtual that could very well be interchangeable. However, if we're doing a whole week of in-person and a whole week of virtual, I think it's likely our teachers will be planning two weeks every week. And so I just really appreciate your concerns over what's feasible for our teachers so that this is really a sustainable process this year. Also, the importance of having this parallel option for our families. We know we have both students and staff that because of health, their own health concerns or those in the family or other reasons won't be able to go back. And I think in a time where our families have so little control over what's going on, to have that choice that they can make for their household is just so important. And then lastly, last question and comment, last question. I know that it's possible, especially if we have too rigorous of an opening in September, I know it is possible that we can move backwards as a county or as a region into phase two and back into phase one. And we talked about how in phase three, the teacher providing instruction would be asynchronous. But can you explain a little bit to our families that if we had to move back into phase two, which would have the older end of our learners all virtual, or phase one where everyone was out of the school, can you provide some context on how that instruction would be different than this asynchronous in stage, in phase three?
Yes. The intent would be just like the rigor and expectation and graded assignments in the online option, that parallel option that's there. The, you know, we would transition into that same type of teaching and learning where the teachers who are currently would be doing in-person part of the time and, and helping kids with the asynchronous learning as far as providing that pathway for parents. It would just revert to that teacher being, you know, on the computer and doing it. There would be asynchronous portion where the class or small groups of students would be together with the teacher. And then there would also be asynchronous learning going on as well. And so it would be a blend of the two options that when you consider, you know, the A-B, A-A-A-B-B-B, it would be like taking that and just collapsing it with the online. But the expectation would be that teachers also are being able to capture some of their lessons so that if parents aren't home during the day, they could pull up video to help them with the lesson when they got home from work with their kids. So provide some flexibility. And so we've talked about all of those options being available, and it might be that it's a different teacher that captures that video that we can put online for families that are on the topic of what that would be on that day. But it, you know, it would definitely be, there would be expectations, attendance would be taken as far as trying to make sure that we know that students are getting online and doing their work. You know, some of the software that we've purchased, that we're purchasing with the CARES Act funding, you know, that adaptive software is something that will help our kids when they're on the asynchronous part to be able to continue to identify and fill gaps and move them forward. And so it would not look like the, you know, like online learning looked like in the spring when we were not, you know, originally it was continuity of learning where we weren't moving forward out of content that had already been covered to then covering content. But this would be something out of the, out of the gate, the expectation is learning for the current year of the current material as well as filling gaps that students may have from this past year would be an expectation.
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen. I think your explanation is really important for our parents to hear on, on what virtual instruction could look like in the fall and be different from this spring. So thank you to all my colleagues for their patience with my abundance of questions. I yield the floor.
Ms. Ogburn?
Okay, yeah, Marcy has covered a lot, but I'm going to follow right behind you, Marcy, with a few more questions. I, just a couple of things based on the emails that we're already getting where people are voicing their concerns. And I have, we've had a little bit of time between our closed session and this meeting to read our public comment that has come in. And one thing I've seen, I think is a consistent theme, is that discussion between what are we actually required to do and what is optional. So I'm hoping that when we send out our survey next week, that we can clarify that in the survey, this is what we must do and the physical distancing and those requirements, because I think people are under the impression that we have more options here than we actually do. And, you know, we're being told, be bold, go out there, open schools, do this, do that. And, you know, we, at the heart of all of this, we do have to keep the health and safety of our students, but also the adults who come in contact with those students in mind. So I think if we could clarify what's required in that survey, I think would help families so that when they are given the opportunity to comment and make suggestions, they're making it with that full knowledge of, yes, these are the things we have to do. So yes, make your comments based on that. So, but also I wanted to ask if there has been any consideration. I've seen there's a possibility of other schools doing a little bit of a tweak to what our plan is. And instead of A-B and then A-B, they're doing Monday and Tuesday, one group of kids come, they're closed on Wednesday for cleaning, Thursday, Friday, the other half of the population comes. So I'll throw that out there as an idea of what some other schools are doing. And so you wouldn't have a Tuesday, Thursday attendance, you'd have Monday, Tuesday, and then the other. But I agree, half, half is probably the goal. And if Dr. Cashwell, I think it's probably to you, if you could clarify, just so people know what to expect, that the survey and what we're going to be asking families to do, because I know that we're going to be literally contacting every single family in the county to get an indication of what their intention is. And we really do need those survey results. So if you could talk about that a little more detail, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. You're right. Our intent, you know, initially with this first set of surveys is to really do, as you suggested, outline, you know, based on the guidelines that we've received for what a phase three opening would look like. And I'll still continue to clarify a phase, phase three opening, because we're not currently in phase three, and we certainly have all indications that by the time fall comes, we'll be in phase three. We're making our plans based on phase three guidance. And so we certainly will note that based on the minimal guidelines, the six-foot distancing, the health screening and so on, our plans were created revolved, revolving around that and that's engage their level of comfort returning based on that knowledge and get and gather feedback on the various models that you've described. But certainly we'll want to hear from our families about whether those mitigation strategies alone are enough to make them feel safe to come back. And if not, what other strategies? Or are those strategies not important to our families? So we're certainly wanting feedback on a number of fronts. We ask questions about schedules and what's important to families. As Marcy Shea alluded to, is it important if you have students at different levels to be on the same type of schedule and that sort of thing? So this is going to give us some broad feedback that will help us shape our plans. And then it won't be the last time our families hear from us. So as we narrow our plans and, and are able to shape them based on what we've heard from our community, and we do want all of our staff and all of our families to respond to this initial survey, we'll want to narrow it down so that we can make our plans as well executed as possible. And that will include knowing And that will include knowing, you know, uh, I am or I am not choosing the fully online option. So we mentioned the possibility of a parallel option. And with this first survey, we wouldn't ask a family to commit. We're asking what's your preference based on what you know today? And that's gonna help us, um, narrow our plans. But at some point, families can continue to expect to hear from us and be making decisions about based on what our plans are, uh, what is it that you prefer? Are you online? Are you in person, given whatever model we land on? You do or you don't expect to use bus transportation? Because all of those things will, um, help us plan for and prepare for how we'll actually implement the strategies based on the numbers of students that we're receiving.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Atkins?
So thank you, Dr. Tighen, um, for the very detailed report. I do appreciate that. Um, at the top of, of some of the information that you shared, I just wanna let you know that I did attend the Family and Community Engagement Series. Uh, the topic was special education updates and it was fantastic. I really liked the work, um, that we are trying to do around special education. Uh, particularly, I'm thinking about the few parents that reached out to me that for the first time, they will be learning special education. So I just want to, um, share that feedback, uh, because I did attend and I hear that I attended and then I started getting, uh, some feedback about it and it was delightful feedback that I received and, and something that, um, came out of a conversation was, as we are talking about special education, maybe having more sessions on, uh, that person that's just starting to enter Henrico County Public Schools and what does special education really feel like in a classroom? Now, in this case, what does it feel like virtually? So I just wanted to give that feedback. It, it was a great opportunity for me, uh, want to listen and to learn. Uh, the second piece that I have is just, uh, another, uh, consideration is around, I believe, uh, you mentioned the training for our staff. Is H C P S University, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. We had a lot of information shared, so I wanna make sure that I'm accurate. Um, I want to ask, I know, uh, our teachers are having to look at a screen a whole lot and I, uh, I know that that training is virtual and that does make sense, but are we offering other ways for our staff to absorb information? Um, I don't wanna be costly in printing out any type of books, but I do wanna be mindful that we are asking our teachers to spend more time on the computer than ever before. And it may be worth asking the question of, are there other ways for you to absorb information? There are some that may be, uh, helpful to just listen. There are others where they may want visual. There are some, in this case, where we're doing a little bit of both. And then there are, I will tell you, there are some, um, that really do need the sheet of paper, uh, to absorb. And so I just wanted to share that with you. Maybe it's a question to ask the staff, um, what are their preferences? Not that we can do it, but it is good to know, um, that we are adults and we are learning too and we do have different learning styles other than online and virtual. So just something for you to, to certainly think about. Um, and let's see, so the other piece is around the, the adaptive software that we have. Can you talk a little bit about the integrity of that software?
Sure. And it's actually, I wouldn't say it's one software. So there are a number of digital resources that were, um, identified based on helping to bolster our core curriculum. So for example, um, I'll use elementary because, um, it's, it might be a clearer example. So for mathematics and social studies and science and English language arts, selecting digital resources that can be embedded in alongside our curriculum so that our, as teachers are planning, they can leverage these digital resources to provide students independent practice. They can, um, leverage some of the tools and lessons that are inside of these platforms. But also many of them, particularly when it's, uh, language arts or mathematics, are what we call adaptive. So that means a student may, uh, they would go into the program and they would be tested. It would, um, determine, for example, what their reading level is. And it might provide some diagnostic information related to specific skills in reading like, uh, phonics or, uh, any number of other, um, you know, fluencies in that area. Mathematics the same way by strand. And then it, based on the information it gathers from the individual student, um, assigns appropriate practice. And so that's, uh, what we mean when we say adaptive. It sort of adapts to the student who's using it rather than just a teacher pushing out the same module to everyone. It adapts to a student's needs. And then the teacher also has the ability to track that data and see how her students are doing or his students are doing. So for example, um, if we were on an A B schedule and, you know, it's, uh, the teacher may recommend some assignments or work for students to do online at home on the day they're not in school, there's going to be data collected from that. Teachers can monitor that. They can assign different assignments to different students and the program itself, um, can do the same. So, uh, another benefit is because we're using common, um, platforms like this, uh, and some schools have used the, these kinds of things in the past. It's not unfamiliar, but they may all be using something different. By having a common platform, we can, uh, we can also pull data centrally. So we can see, for example, how many of our third graders are, um, proficient at various points in the year on some of the diagnostic assessments that the, that these, um, provide. And it also is important with, um, the unknown related to being able to track student progress. If we were to go into another closure at any period in time, it allows us to gauge student progress and mastery, um, in a consistent way. And of course, individual teachers, uh, gauge mastery all along the way as well. It certainly doesn't negate teacher assessment, but I think it's another, another tool to help us do that and meet student individual needs.
Thank you for sharing that. Something that, that I've been hearing out in the community for, for those that, that can't afford, um, to have daycare, whether it's an A B schedule or week to week schedule, um, regardless of the schedule, you know, for that, that household that has two parents that are working, um, and don't have a solution, um, sort of for the half and half, uh, and so they will go with virtual. Something that I have heard is, hey guys, well, they may have found a sitter and they are talking about maybe taking fifteen, twenty kids into a home and that's how those kids will receive virtual learning. The concern though, and that's why I asked about the integrity, is because if we're going to, and if folks will decide to do that, I think it's a great idea, but I also wanna make sure when you're gonna have ten, maybe fifteen kids in the same grade, all on maybe, you know, a few laptops, uh, making sure that this system is intuitive enough to be able to decipher between kids and their own answers, each individual answers versus sharing answers, whether we're testing and such. And so that's why I was asking a little bit about the integrity question, but, but thank you for sharing that. I think it sounds like software would be able to pick up on that.
Yeah, and certainly does, is not intended to replace the teacher. Even for someone who is in fully online instruction, they're not simply gonna be interacting with software all day. They're gonna be interacting with a teacher virtually. They'll be assigned a teacher, just as if they were to go to school face to face. The teacher will, um, likely be providing real-time lessons, uh, one-on-one assistance, uh, and small group assistance, uh, via the computer. So, and then of course supplementing in some independent work, probably leveraging those, um, digital aspects as well.
Fantastic. So thank you for sharing that and for all those that, that had that question, that, that was your answer. Um, the other, um, consideration I'd, I'd like for you to have is while we are having conversations with daycares, maybe social services along with CDC, um, is think about having an onsite daycare in the school. I would imagine since it's going to be populated, maybe fifty percent, we don't know what that number is, that there will be space within the school where we could possibly have an onsite daycare for our teachers. And if we are able to do something like that, um, perhaps also making a requirement, um, in that onsite daycare setting to make sure that distance learning is set aside, um, within that space, uh, if that is an option. So, Dr. Tighen, if that's something you could potentially research and ask questions about, having a onsite daycare? I didn't know if you had a response to that or not.
Well, and, and I think we will know more about available space in the buildings after we get some, you know, not only just the initial survey data, but then the subsequent survey that lets us know exactly what, um, our families are choosing. Um, we know that we have some exceptional education classrooms that they'll need, they'll need to be split in two. And so that's gonna require additional space in our buildings as well. So, um, we've talked about it. We've also, we've also, um, talked with daycare facilities, uh, for our families more than staff, but about being able to have the level of connectivity that every student that they have, if they're in daycare full-time or even halftime, would be able to access the software and the teacher component piece. And so, you know, we have considered all of this because we understand that the daycare is a concern for our staff as well as our families.
And so thank you for your response on that. The other piece that I would like for you to consider, also do a little bit maybe research on, is allowing those teachers who are in Henrico County, who have children that attend Henrico County, be given the choice to teach virtually at home if their teach, if their desire is for their own children to, you know, use that parallel option or that virtual option at home. Maybe considering allowing some teachers to work virtually from home. And so, um, I, I don't know what that might look like, but I do think it's worth, uh, entertaining and doing a little bit of research on, um, for those particular teachers that, that aren't comfortable sending their kids back into the classroom. They are going to select a virtual option and they'd like the option to work virtually as well. So I don't know if you've received any of that feedback at all or started any sort of research on that, so I wanted to share that with you.
Yes, and, and again, uh, the cert, that's one of the purposes of the two surveys, you know, the first one and then the subsequent one, is to determine that. But we will need, you know, part of that parallel pathway. We do need teachers that would teach, if they're teaching online full-time, then they will need, you know, we would assume they would be teaching from home, you know, remote learning themselves, remote teaching. Um, and so there is that option. We will need teachers to teach those online parallel pathway students.
Right. And so, so I guess my, my message here is I'm not so sure that we have to wait for the results to be proactive in figuring out what that looks like. Um, I think that, um, and you may have already did this work, so please, you can stop me at any time, but, but I, I'm hopeful that you, you hear my message clearly when I have teachers calling me and saying that's what they want. I do hope that we're going to be a little bit proactive. We do have to wait for results, but I also would hate for us to miss an opportunity to be proactive with, with our teachers and, um, making sure that right alongside academically, we wanna be prepared, but we also need to be just as focused on our teachers who are fearful about coming into that building and be proactive with a response. And I don't, I necessarily don't think we have to wait for the survey for that, but I'll leave that to you guys as the experts to, to figure that out. And, uh, the other, just comment that I wanted to make around the setting, um, for our children returning back to school. I know for me, um, when and, or if and when I walk into the school building, it's going to feel strange to look around and see staff with masks on. And then I tell myself, okay, now be seven. And so when I think about what that looks like to be an adult and walk into a school and, and have that, that little bit of strange, bizarre feeling, and then I say, now be seven, I really want us to, to think about as we are talking to our teachers and our training about academics and, and planning and instruction, that we know we have a gap in achieving gap, but we also need to spend some time talking to our teachers on sort of being a little bit more patient, a little bit more flexible and really understanding that there's also gonna be a gap before we even get to the instruction. I do think that when our kids come into a school building and see adults and their, their favorite teachers with masks on and such and sit down in a classroom, I'm just hopeful that our, our innovative learning coaches are having those conversations about, hey, let's not dive right into academics unless you walked in today.
Absolutely. And, and you bring up an excellent point. And I know particularly our exceptional education teachers and social emotional, uh, support staff have been thinking about how to help with visuals and prepare, you know, some of our students who really don't adapt to change well in, in the traditional environment, helping them understand what they can expect to see and, um, what the rules are, uh, for, you know, remaining safe, especially our pre-k students, those who may have cognitive disabilities, to help have those cues there, those social stories, um, that they can anchor themselves in around the new environment. So all points well taken.
And that, that's all I have at this time.
Ms. Consella?
Yes, thank you. And I wish I could say all of my questions have been answered so far, but they have not. Um, so here we go. Um, Dr. Tighen, so because we've received so much feedback about, um, just differing, uh, preferences from our parents, um, and, and teacher staff, what phase do we have to be in to return to something even similar to normal? Phase four, which we haven't really heard much about, correct?
Yeah, I, and, and Dr. Tighen may have more information than I do, but last we talked, which was yesterday, I, she did, she and I both, uh, have discussed and as has our entire team, we've not really been given any look at anything, uh, guideline-wise beyond phase three, so we can only speak to what we know phase three guidelines to be. Um, we can make the assumption that phase four or just exiting phase three means back to normal. I don't know, uh, if there are certain health protocols that will continue to be suggested or if there will be any guidelines or mandates were, uh, required to follow moving forward. I, I'm certain that a number of best practices will likely stick, those that aren't limiting. But, you know, with hand washing, increased hand washing protocols, many of the same things you might've seen in our schools with the flu season and that sort of thing, uh, in play with extra cleanings.
Okay. So, um, how will, if we, we will go back in phase three.
We hope.
We've been presented, right, well, with the three options. How will these options change? Will the days change based on the surveys? Like I know we're gonna take into account, um, uh, parent, student feedback as well as teacher, staff, but how will the three options out there change? Because we've been hearing, the school board, all five of us and, uh, you have been hearing about the decisions have been made, there are the plans. Uh, can, can you speak to those watching about how these plans will change?
Absolutely. And, and there's nothing to say that ultimately the plan, uh, doesn't reflect any of the three as they've been currently outlined based on what we learned from our community. It was a start to help our community understand, um, what kind of an opening they might expect based on the guidelines we were given. So we, uh, feel fairly comfortable based on the, the planning and the research we've done that we can bring kids back to school and adhere to the guidelines we were given in those three ways. That's what those three options are. Uh, there may be variations of that once we hear from our students. It may be that, um, we might be able to increase the number of days students come into our buildings if we know that, uh, a larger portion will be online than anticipated, fully ver, you know, fully virtual. Um, we may find that there are some staffing concerns that would hinder us. Once we've heard from our staff, staff comfort level, um, when, or return to work and individual cases like that, that could hinder us, um, from moving forth with various aspects of the plan as we've imagined it. So it's certainly meant to be a starting point to gauge, uh, families' preferences and, and interest. Um, but ultimately we'll need to hear from them to be able to further shape our plans. And then things like operational logistics and costs will be, uh, very heavily, uh, you know, examined to make an ultimate decision. So, um, you know, we'll certainly hear from our families and, and it may be that as we further examine some of these options, for example, the half-day option, the cleaning costs could outweigh, um, preference, right? So it might be something like that's preferred. We know that particular option comes with much more frequent cleaning. And so once we attach a price tag to it, it may be that, that option becomes less favorable. So I think we're gonna have to, um, continue to, uh, look at all angles as we, um, make a path forward, but certainly no path has been determined. There, there's so much yet to know and understand.
Thank you for explaining that because I think, I know I did, uh, based on what's come into the school board emails that we've read, there are a lot of, uh, parents and staff concerned that, you know, what about us? You know, how will our feedback? You know, the decisions have already been made. What's the point of the survey? So thank you for, you know, just highlighting that, um, it's fluid, it's gonna evolve. These were not final. It just made it possible for us to describe what it looked like, potentially in the fall in a phase three, right?
Exactly. And I think hopefully once folks receive the survey and, and warning, it's long because we ask a lot of questions and we're soliciting a lot of feedback about a lot of things related to reopening. So, um, I know it's been anxiously awaited by the community and our staff. And so hopefully they'll see that we're really probing to hear from them on a number of matters.
So... So, what, in a phase three, if you come back in the building, who wears a mask? This has been a question. I've got a lot. Who wears a mask?
And certainly, the way we will outline and share to the public with the survey, we are basing an assumption of opening on what the minimum guidelines are that have been put out by VDOE, which is that adults in the building are to be wearing masks unless they are six feet distant. So, in other words, a teacher at the front of the classroom giving instruction wouldn't have to have the mask or the face covering rather on unless the teacher were within six feet of a student. So, that is the way we've outlined it. It doesn't mean that once, so some of our questions in the survey, for example, are how comfortable are you with that as a staff member? If this is the guideline, how likely are you to feel safe and comfortable returning to work? If you're not comfortable, are there other mitigation strategies? For example, is your preference that students be wearing masks or that staff be asked to wear them at all times? And so, same thing with families, asking them if your teachers and staff members inside a building are required to wear masks, but again, not when within six, how likely are you to be comfortable? So, we've based sort of the starting point off those minimum guidelines and then understand that, you know, depending on what we hear from our community, there would be room to increase health and safety strategies or alter them or mitigate them in a different manner that might better meet needs.
Okay, moving right along to the next one. I've heard a lot of conversation around childcare for our parents. And Ms. Atkins, I believe, referenced the childcare opportunity in the building for some of our staff. I am concerned, are there any, with the partnerships that we're looking at for daycare, they would extend to staff as well? Do we, would there be a fee? For example, if some of our teachers and staff whose children attend school in other counties, could they somehow get a variance to come to their school or a theater school for this year without a fee?
We're exploring all of those options. I wouldn't say that there's a set plan related to that, but we know that daycare is a concern for everyone and particularly as we want to increase the opportunity for in-person instruction for students. That means having staff in our buildings and we understand a large majority of our staff do have significant childcare needs. So, that's part of what we're surveying our staff about. We ask them their preferences and whether they would be interested in doing, just as you said, a variance to attend. And so, again, based on need and understanding how many students are likely to come back and what kind of additional space we might have in our facilities to do something, some sort of a childcare situation for our staff on-site. We just won't know the complete feasibility of it, but we're not leaving any stone unturned. So, we're looking at all of those options. And certainly, if it was an out-of-county variance, someone who resides in a different county but works in Henrico and wanted their children on the same schedule, I would imagine there would be a minimal fee associated, given, you know, these are residents and taxpayers of another county, but that can be done so I think with the idea that we want it to be reasonable, affordable, and attainable for our staff.
Okay, so feeding right into following up, you know, should staff teachers live in another county? They work in Henrico County Public Schools. They don't want a variance to uproot their children. What are the, for those that have asked, what are the chances we will align with regional partners? For example, what is RPS doing? What is Chesterfield doing? What is Hanover doing with their back to school? How will that come into play or will we differ?
Well, certainly every attempt will be made to understand what's happening in other localities close to us in the region. And I think there's always a desire. I know I meet frequently the superintendents in the region and our staff meet with their counterparts in the region. And so, we certainly want to work together, A, to share ideas. I think we can learn so much from each other and to recognize the fact that there is a lot of crossover with residents working in neighboring counties. And so, to the extent that we're able to align, that would be a factor. So, you know, you sort of answered earlier, is it simply people are voting on choices? It's a lot of factors. And so, at the end of the day, given preferences and also how we see our neighbors aligning, that may ultimately drive some of the decision-making. But I would also point out that we may see some variance. For example, you know, some of our neighboring localities are much smaller and they may have rates of individuals opting for fully virtual instruction that are large enough that the number of students they're left with, that delta, is small enough that they can have them in the building more frequently and still meet all of those guidelines. And so, you know, that's going to be something that each locality is going to weigh. And I know everyone's goal is to have students in as much as possible while still meeting those guidelines. And so, school relative size and all of that and the preferences of each community will play into the plans ultimately.
Okay, I've received quite a bit of feedback about, once you make your choice, whether, no matter which option it is, and for example, if you were going to be a virtual learner, if your child is struggling, whether it be elementary, secondary, what are your options to change? Have we even thought that far?
Yes, we have, and I certainly don't think we ever want to institute something without flexibility because there's so much unknown and we're asking families to commit to a choice at some point that we, and we understand their needs may change and situations change. So, I think the idea would be to be as flexible as we can to help students adjust to different schedules at various points as we're feasibly able to. And Dr. Tagen, I don't know if you want to add anything else related to the team's discussion on that matter.
We have had cursory conversations and, you know, there's, as in a lot of things, there's not been final decisions made on anything, but we continue to look to try to be flexible. I mean, we know we could be in a situation that if folks opted for, you know, if our families opted for online and want to come back in the building, we know that there could be some space concerns if we're already at maximum capacity. And so, kind of trying to figure out then what would that mean for families if we don't have seats? It's not like a normal school year where we can, we always put one more in, you know? And that's really not an option this year, at least with the premises we're starting with, given what we've been told about phase three.
Okay, thank you. So, what will, if you were a virtual learner, what will your electives look like at the secondary? Have we, have, can you maybe touch on that a little bit, Dr. Tagen? For example, chorus banned, the electives go away?
Yeah, and Dr. Hughes is with us also. I would acknowledge from the instructional team, and she may want to chime in on behalf of the instructional folks, but as well as Dr. Grant representing the principals and the secondary team. So, between the three of them, I'll let them tackle that question.
I'll let, if Leslie wants to jump in, I'm alive.
Okay.
Yes, so thank you, Mrs. Consella. Those are all certainly options that we are considering. We are currently in the process of redeveloping, if you will, rebuilding our curriculum in Schoology. As you know, when school closed in March, we were working very hard to get teachers' resources that they needed to develop, you know, to deliver the curriculum for the students. And so, we've been working very hard over the summer to ensure that all of our subject areas, both core, our electives, any opportunity that we have for the students, that we have our resources built in Schoology, both a solid curriculum and resources for teachers so that that content can be delivered online, whether it be delivered on the days that the students are face-to-face or packaged so that teachers will have resources to provide to the students when they're at home online in a very succinct manner so that it follows more of a schedule and they're following their exact classes. So, while we don't have specific details for how each one of those electives or core classes will work, that's what we're working on right now to ensure that when we get to September that the students can have as much of an experience as they would have if they were there every day face-to-face.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Hughes. What about if you have a virtual student, secondary level? What, can you talk about clubs, sports, things of that nature?
Yeah, and I'll just also want to chime in quickly because I think your question about electives is a great one and one that I think a lot of folks have trouble wrapping their minds around what virtual chorus looks like or that sort of thing. And it reminds me of when we first launched online PE, Health and PE, and everyone thought, how do you do PE online? That just couldn't possibly work. And then, you realize when you think creatively and empower students to take on some of the movement and that sort of thing while they're not simply online, there are some creative ways to approach a number of our elective areas, but certainly recognize there are also some limitations in that. So, and you asked about sports and clubs and those sorts of things and certainly, I will toss that to the team that's been working on that.
And I don't think, I think you're.
Yes, I'm here. We're currently working with groups of principals to lay out how that would look. It's still a work in progress, but we're taking into account, you talked about electives early or PE sports and going to have a list of set criteria for all of those areas before we come back to school.
The idea is basically, how can we recreate as much of the experience virtually, including club participation? And maybe some students who are virtual learners all day, who are members of an athletic team, would maybe be face-to-face for those athletic practices as they would traditionally happen with all of the mitigation strategies in place. I mean, those are decisions I think we would allow families to make and want to be offering as much of that as we can.
I mean, having read some of the sports guidelines, for example, it would seem that because of the distancing guidelines they put out there for sports, that if you were a virtual learner, you could still participate in your sport, right? Whatever it looks, I mean, I'm not sure what it looks like, but that's a pretty important question from some.
It is, yes. Your eligibility requirements for VHSL-related activities would still be in place, but you are fully enrolled in Henrico County Public Schools. You have a full course load, academics and all those other things are, requirements are met. Then certainly, if the question is if you're a virtual student, are you still a student? Absolutely, and then you'd have to meet all the other criteria as well to be eligible to play.
Okay, and then I had another question specific to teachers. The, what teachers do we anticipate shifting around where the needs are? Is that a concern that our teachers should have? For example, whether there are resource teachers and staff or just who decides, you know, which schools decide they want to come back? I mean, will our teachers be moving around and shifting schools?
I think, you know, anything's possible. And I would say that, you know, as is the case during a traditional school year when we're face-to-face, you know, there are times when enrollment calls for us to shift positions and we understand the stress and anxiety that puts an employee in. And so, we always want to be cognizant of that. We're certainly not going to move people just to move them. We want to first find out what our staff needs are, what their preferences are, what we can do to ensure their safety and well-being and meet their needs. And then, certainly have to realize that, you know, as we've always said, you know, you're under contract and where exactly in Henrico might change from time to time and recognize that there may be the need to do some shifting. Hopefully, knowing each individual teacher's preference will help us shift people in a manner that is least disruptive. For example, if their preference is to be the virtual instructor and it happens that we're able to accommodate that, then, you know, that might mean less moving of other individuals. So, certainly, we're attuned to the fact that that can cause disruption, but certainly wouldn't say that it is not possible because it surely is.
Well, thank you and thank you, Dr. Grant. Thank you, Dr. Hughes, Dr. Tagen, Dr. Cashwell. In wrapping up, I just want to, you know, thank everybody for their work on this and to highlight to those listening that we all wish we could be back in school and we are just trying to plan with what we know, given the guidelines that we've been given. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Tagen, can Dr. Hughes speak to for me, what supports and accommodations for students with special needs might look like come September?
Absolutely.
Sure, thank you, Reverend Dr. Cooper. As you can well imagine, the exceptional education staff has been working diligently as we know that our students with disabilities are going to need some extra TLC as we move into the school year. And as was indicated earlier, right now, the team is waiting for some resources from the state that have been promised to be released, but they're currently working on a set of social stories and processes that we can provide to families even before the students come back. Because as indicated earlier, we know that having students who, you know, don't experience change well when they walk into the classrooms and see teachers with masks and they get on bus and see the PPE and we don't want anyone to be frightened or be confused about those changes. So, before school even begins, we are trying to develop many processes to make the children feel assured when they come back to school. And then, beyond that, we're looking at our student populations to see how we can ensure that they fit into these hybrid or, you know, parallel models, if you will. What's the best for them? We have some thought about perhaps bringing some of our ex-ed students back every day, Tuesday through Friday, where they would come half-day in the morning and then another group would come half-day in the afternoon so that they make up some of that time that we know has been very difficult for some of our students to receive in that virtual platform. We've also been looking at our Mondays or, you know, on whatever day that the students are not in school, whether it be a Monday or a Friday or a Wednesday, looking at bringing some of our most vulnerable exceptional education students back on those days so that they can receive some related services or just look at some of the compensatory services. So, you know, we've really tried to carefully consider each one of our programs, if you will, and what exactly it will need for those students to not only make up lost time but to transition into a school year that looks very different for them.
Okay, thank you so much. So, have all the case managers been reaching out to their students?
So, we are in the process right now of developing a process, if you will, and I just said that, to actually have all of our students' IEPs updated before the school year begins. We know that when school closed, we wrote temporary learning plans which covered their cases for the summer, but certainly will not cover, you know, their services as we go back into the school year. So, Donna and her team are working with case managers now to develop a process where we reach out to every family, have a meeting before school starts to ensure that they understand exactly what services will be provided, what related services will be provided so that when the school year begins, families will have a clear understanding of what the school day and week will look like for our exceptional education students.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hughes. That's very helpful to me and I'm sure others who may be listening or watching. Dr. Cashwell, is there a possibility to explore maybe expanding distance learning in other sites in the community that may be supervised or say monitored by screen volunteers or other students or student teachers? Some parents may feel that they need their children supervised, you know, when they can't be there with them. Is that even a possibility?
I think it speaks sort of to the childcare question that was asked before. I mean, you know, we have gone as far as thinking about, for the traditional childcare providers in the community, making sure, you know, do they have access to internet? Will students be able to log on their devices and have continued learning? But certainly, anything where our own staff would be monitoring instruction off-site isn't something we've explored fully, but I'll certainly take note of that and see if there might be some possibilities. I think as we've looked at partnering with the Education Foundation and I know our YMCA's run some programs, I certainly think there's an opportunity to partner with some of those organizations, the PALS programming, for example. And if they're running things off-site or even onsite potentially, making sure that we, if anything, provide some. if, if anything, provide some guidance and best practice of how to keep students engaged with some of the online components. I think you bring up some great points.
So in, in your comments in regards to daycares, where do daycares fall in line with our reopening plan? I E. before school and after school, where does that come in?
Well, they're under the same guidelines that we are as our private schools. And so they're operating at limited capacity as well. And so, you know, even in some preliminary conversations with childcare providers, they've been clear that, you know, in a way, it's better and in sync if we're on A B days because they couldn't take all of the kids if we, for example, weren't in school and kids were home every day and needed to be in childcare. They wouldn't have the capacity to bring them all in. So by having staggered schedules, it's with students in school someday and in a childcare center the other day, they stay at half capacity as do we or at limited capacity, I should say. And, and, you know, are certainly often already equipped to assist students with homework and, and all that. So I don't think it's unusual for many of our daycare centers and providers and after school clubs to have components that allow students to keep learning and enriching. So, but we would certainly want to partner in, in any way that we could to make sure that, you know, whether it's grandparents at home watching students or a formal childcare center, and I think all of you have brought up great ideas and scenarios you've heard from your constituents about how they may manage a way forward, will want to stay tuned to that and see if there's a way we can support them with, with strategies if, if nothing else to help in that new, new situation.
Okay, thank you. Also quickly, I spoke to some youth, I did a brief forum with the Henrico N L A C P. And some of the young people were talking about the stress that they're experiencing with the evolving, you know, going from being in class to being at home and just the stress they're on. What, what are our thoughts on virtual councils for telehealth, for emotional support for students who are being stressed out because of all the changes, because of the learning environment?
Yeah, that, we are very aware of that and, you know, that was a real challenge for us when we were so suddenly apart from our students to be able to continue to provide those supports. So our counselors did begin virtual counseling and I know our schools really ramped up efforts to advertise that to their families, that that was something that was available. Our social workers and psychologists and counselors who typically had students they were meeting with on a regular base or were serving have went out of their way to continue to touch base. But we also know folks who may have never taken advantage of that before, all of a sudden these students are needing those supports. So I think we're going to have to be really intentional as we go into the next school year to have mechanisms that are accessible, especially to our fully virtual students. Those who were able to see face to face, even on, if it's on a limited basis, I think there'll be more natural mechanisms to plug into those mental health supports, but we'll want to make sure we're intentional about how we do that for our fully, fully virtual students.
So, so are they, if I've never accessed the, the assistance and the help, can I access it now if I'm a child of the vision?
That, yes, as we approached the end of the school year, the counselors made themselves available to anyone in the school as they would have if we were face to face. So I know principals were sending out links and contact information and they were hosting virtual sessions. Of course, we're into the summer programming phase now, so some of that access may be different than it would have been during, during the traditional school year, but there are certainly access points. Dr. Hughes, did I miss anything related to social emotional supports that your team is considering?
No, I think you captured it very well. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Dr. Cash. A quick question. So many parents, as we all know, were thrust into the teacher support role and many of them felt inadequate to support their child. So this one for me is kind of through the lens of equity. Would there be any trainings available for parents or caretakers that they can take throughout the summer to brush up on their own technical skills?
We certainly want to support parents however we can. And unlike our emergency virtual plans, which probably did rely a lot heavier on parents having to intervene or childcare providers to keep students on track, the fully virtual options that can be expected in the fall really are more synchronous in nature in many ways and involve a teacher doing the work and, and not having to lean on the parent. But I also know that kind of a structure and schedule feels very different in the household. There are certainly some best practices to manage that. And so you can expect that our family and learning engagement folks will be putting out assistance through workshops or seminars or maybe even some virtual conversations. And our instructional team will provide a number of digital resources, sort of as we've already embedded in Netflix of how to create a daily schedule and those sorts of things. But I think folks who may have had a heavier lift with that in the past, if they opt to go virtually online or just trying to manage those off days of instruction, if it's some sort of a hybrid model, will find that it's much more robust, much more scheduled than what was the, what was the case in the emergency learning plans.
Okay, so, but we will offer the opportunity for them to receive assistance they needed?
Absolutely. And the same goes for our students who during the school year are with us face to face all the time. We want parents to have strategies to help their students with reading or whatever it might be at home or simply, yeah, helping our families in this scenario and any traditional scenario is a continued focus.
Thank you, Dr. That, that's it for me. I appreciate that. Thank you to Dr. Hughes and Dr. Tigan. And again, all the staff who participated in providing the update for the COVID-19 and all the work that our staff is doing. Well done. Thank you so much. Did you want to move to the school calendar?
Absolutely. Ready to move on to that item. Thanks, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the next item, we have an update related to the proposed school calendar for the 2021-2022 school year. And then we'll be looking for the board to approve a calendar for the 2021-2022 school year. So we'll share information and then again, look for board to, the board to approve a calendar for 2021.
Well, good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Dr. Cashwell. I am happy to be here to report an update on the 2021-2022 proposed school calendar options. At the last board meeting on May 14th, it was decided that two calendar options would be shared with staff and families to seek, to gather their feedback. One option was a pre Labor Day start and the other option was a post Labor Day start. On the, the week of May 18th, the two options were posted on our website and a survey was launched. The survey was available in English and in Spanish. And Mr. Jenks and his team used every communication venue to educate and engage our community in the calendar discussion. Mass emails were sent out on May 20th, 28th and June 2nd specifically on this topic of the calendar and it reached all staff and all student households, both in English and Spanish. One e-newsletter article was shared on May 26th, which was received by all staff and all of our student households. And then there was a news release on May 20th, which again, reached all staff and our wide variety of local news and community stakeholders. And the news release was posted on the website. The survey was briefly mentioned in the Memorial Day message on May 21st, which again, reached all staff and all student households. And in addition, there were 12 social media posts, four on Facebook, four on Twitter and four on Instagram. And the survey was closed on June 3rd with over almost 14,000 responses. So I can tell you that, that effort that, that Mr. Jenks and his team put into the communication of it certainly paid off. As a reminder, the survey tool does not limit the responses to one per I P address. But of the 13,803 responses, 51.4% or 7,090 respondents indicated a preference for option B, a post Labor Day start, and 48.6 or 6,713 preferring option A, the pre Labor Day start. To just kind of give you a stance at where they were. With almost 14,000 responses, the individuals' team, themes showed on this slide and the next slide only represent at the most 2.5% down to 0.1% of respondents. So I just wanted to put it in perspective. The regional alignment has been a priority for our staff and families. Hanover County ended up delaying their discussion on the 21-22 calendar, but indicate that their community wants to align themselves with Henrico. And Chesterfield County Public Schools adopted a one week pre Labor Day start. I believe it was last week. With comments about spring testing, A P testing does have a fixed test date regardless of the school start date. So an earlier start date provides additional instructional time. However, with S O L testing, the division sets the test window. So there would really be no change in the amount of instructional time before or after S O Ls. Some families indicated that they'd already made their vacation plans for the summer of 21. And in reference to the starting more than two weeks prior to Labor Day so that we could end before Memorial Day, state law only permits us to start two weeks prior to Labor Day. And you would have to start obviously more than that to finish up by Memorial Day. In addition, starting, starting one week earlier and potentially starting an additional week earlier the following year, the calendar committee had actually discussed that as an option. And with conversations with staff as well as the committee, the consensus was that it would, it would cause duplicative work over two subsequent years when you go to change all of your calendars to shift them one week and then another, which impact payroll dates. And so there was, there was additional manpower hours and therefore cost associated with doing a slow roll from one week to two weeks. There were also a lot of comments that you probably saw from, with the entire list of the feedback, that there was some confusion with some of our folks that responded that indicated they were thinking we were talking about this September rather than September a year from now. But the recommendation from staff is still to adopt a post Labor Day start for the 21-22 school year. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tigan. Mrs. Ogborne?
I don't have any questions. I have two comments. And one of them might lead to a question. I'm not sure. But I have two concerns and one of them has to do with our construction of our new schools that are supposed to open in September of 21. I am concerned that if we do start earlier, those facilities of J R Tucker in Highland Springs and Holiday may not be ready in time for us to open. It was planned all along that they would open after Labor Day. So I, I don't know if there's any information to share on that regard, but that's one concern I have. But I'm also concerned that we don't know what this upcoming school year is going to bring. And so I'm hesitant to make a change like this. If we have another pause in learning, we may have to extend the school year. I think we need to give ourselves the most flexibility as possible. So I, while the survey is, I'm so glad we did it, but boy, I wish we had a clearer answer from the, from the community. We couldn't be more evenly split. But those are my, my two concerns that I would raise. If we didn't have three schools opening, I think we'd be having a different discussion. But those are my two main concerns.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogborne. And I would note that those administration also considered those concerns. And while we're on track with construction now and potentially could gain some headway based on students not being on the campuses, there is, it's too early to forecast whether or not we would anticipate an early delivery date with construction. As you know, from any other construction project, the number of variables that go into delivering a project on time are immense. And so we wouldn't want to predict that it would be ready any earlier than anticipated. And, and certainly the, the other valid concerns you bring up related to the unknown nature of the, the coming school year.
Right. Well, and I just, as far as the construction goes, I, I just know, like, you can have weather delays. You can have so many things that can go wrong. But, I mean, and I've had people tell me, well, you've advocated before for starting before Labor Day, which I have, you know, we had on our legislative agenda for a number of years and we lobbied the General Assembly for this ability to start before. But I don't think we would have anticipated the situation we're in right now. So that, I would hope that whatever decision we make, we will very quickly revisit it for the next year. But, so anyway, I'll bring that up and then I'll turn it over to somebody else.
Reverend Cooper, who do we go to next? He's frozen.
I know, looks like it. Uh oh. I'm trying to remember the order, but I don't recall who was going-
Well, I don't usually start-
Do we want to keep going alphabetically? Do we just want to roll to me and then to Alicia and then Kristi? Is that good?
That, that's what I was going to suggest as well. So, so Marcy, I'll, I'll take over for a moment for our chair. So Marcy, you go, Mrs. Shay, you go next and then we'll continue on.
All right. Thank you. And thank you to the staff for putting together that survey that, as I requested. You know, even though we ended up with a 50-50 split, I think it was really important to get feedback from our community and we pushed the timeline back on voting so we could get that. And so I really appreciate the team effort that was required in that. You know, from my long list of questions on the past couple work sessions about the calendar that I've really put a lot of thought and research into the calendar as well as speaking with various stakeholders involved. And overall, I will say that I do support a move towards a pre Labor Day start. However, for school year 21-22, because of the construction timeline consideration and some other things, I support the post Labor Day calendar for this particular consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Shay. I have heard from Reverend Cooper. For whatever reason, he has lost his connection to our meeting. He is trying to get back in. So I'll continue on with Mrs. Atkins next.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogborne. I actually share your, your response. So I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. When I think about the construction, I support a post Labor Day start. Don't have anything else to add to that other than letting everyone know that that's where I reside for that reason. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kinsella?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Ogborne. I, basically exactly what Mrs. Atkins just said. On post Labor Day due to construction, being familiar with the delays that we don't currently, currently have, but we could encounter, I say the more time we have on our projects, the better off we are. So I'm supportive for fall 2021 of a post Labor Day start.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion before? I'm trying to delay as much as possible for our chair to get back in this meeting. One of the downsides to this kind of situation. But, but anyway, so we'll keep on going because I have, I do not have a message from him. He's obviously trying to get back in. I don't know how Reverend Cooper feels on this, but we're going to go ahead because we still have a quorum and we can still go ahead with our meeting. So I will entertain a motion to, the superintendent has made a recommendation that, and I'm going to look at, that we receive an update but approve the 2021-21-22 calendar with a post Labor Day start. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Shay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, we have to do roll call.
Oh, we will. I'm, I'm sorry. When I do this for the governor's school, we do the ayes and the nays and then we roll call. All right. So we'll do roll call. Mrs. Atkins, you go first.
Aye.
Mrs. Kinsella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
And I voted aye as well. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. And we will proceed on with the agenda.
Thank you. Having reached a decision on the calendar item, that brings us to the next item, 5.03. And that is my request that you approve as a board policy P 4-03-008, Mental Health Awareness Training. And just as a reminder, this, the revisions to this policy were previously shared and reviewed with the board. So seeking your approval at this point.
Okay. Any questions on this policy before we go forward? Mrs. Gumpel is on the line. I saw her pop in there for a second if we have any questions.
Mrs. Ogborne, I did have a-
All right, Mrs. Atkins.
Question?
Go right ahead.
Oh, thank you. I just want to make sure with the policy, Mrs. Gumpel or Dr. Cashwell, if you could speak to- speak to the efforts overall, that we'll make sure that all staff have an opportunity to receive mental awareness training.
Absolutely. You made the recommendation that was noted at our review of this policy, that while the policy is specific to the requirements, bringing on full-time staff or a minimum amount of mental health awareness training, that we agree as a school division, that it's a priority that all of our staff, no matter full-time, part-time, have not only mental health awareness training at a minimum, but also access to robust mental health resources and training. And that includes our employee assistance program, EAP, and a number of other resources. So, we continue to make that a priority for all employees.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Mrs. Atkins? Did that cover it?
That was all, thank you.
Okay, anyone else before we move forward? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you. And the next policy for which I'm seeking your approval has also been previously reviewed. And that is seeking, again, your approval for the proposed revisions to policy P6-03-003 Residence.
Any questions on this policy? This is a legislative update. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve policy P6-03-003?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Shea, seconded by Ms. Consella. I saw you do it. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, wait, we got to do the roll call. All right, Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it, policy revision passes.
Thank you, board members. I'm also seeking your approval of the proposed new policy, which was previously reviewed, policy P6-03-015, admission of non-public students for part-time enrollment.
Okay, any questions on this policy? Okay, do we have a motion to approve policy P6-03-015?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shea. And we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval for previously reviewed proposed new policy P6-08-006, notification of literacy and response to intervention screening and services.
Any questions on this policy? Excuse me.
I'd just like to make a comment, and thank everyone for putting in the timeframe associated with parental notification after testing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Consella, any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion to approve policy P6-08-006?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Consella. Mrs. Atkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board approve the proposed revisions also previously reviewed to policy P7-08-013, home instruction.
Okay, thank you. And any questions on this policy? All right, is there a motion to approve policy P7-08-013?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Atkins. A roll call vote, Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking the board's approval to waive the 30-day review period and approve the proposed revisions to policy P4-03-002 probationary period because the revision in policy is necessitated by a legislative change. And Mrs. Gumpel is here to answer any questions you may have related to this request.
Okay, Mrs. Gumpel, I think it might be a good idea if you would explain this legislative change before we vote on it, just to be sure everybody's clear.
Absolutely. So, in response to the legislation that removes the option of extending a teacher's probationary period from three to five years, the language in our policy details a fourth year and a fifth year of probation, and that has been removed from our policy. And so, because this was necessitated, now there is just the option of three years of probation.
Okay, any questions, board members? No questions. All right, do we have a motion to approve the policy suggested by the superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Atkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board waive the 30-day review period and approve the proposed revisions to policy P6-10-001, non-transportation zones, which is also a revision in policy that's necessitated by a legislative change. And again, Mrs. Gumpel will provide some rationale for that before we ask for a decision.
Yes, so, as you know by the title, non-transportation zones, there are zones in which Henrico County Public Schools does not provide transportation. The legislative change actually requires that on a case-by-case basis, and if space is available, if a parent is unable to provide that transportation who lives in a non-transportation zone, because they provide necessary medical care for another family member who resides in their home, then, and that would have to be substantiated by a written explanation submitted by a healthcare provider, then Henrico County Public Schools would work to provide that transportation. So, that has been added to our policy.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Any questions before we move forward? Do we have a motion to approve the policy as suggested by the superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Consella. All in, oh, I can't do that. Mrs. Atkins, what is your vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board waive the 30-day review period and approve the proposed revisions to policy P6-11-001, school meal program, also based on changes that are legislative in nature. And again, Mrs. Gumpel will provide an overview of the rationale before we request a decision.
So, this legislative change adds the requirement that once a student has been served a meal, that meal cannot be thrown away or discarded because the student can't pay for the meal or because the family has a school meal debt. I will say that is not a practice in Henrico, but it is something that we will now have reflected in our policy, and it is a legislative, a recent legislative change.
Any questions, board members? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve policy P6-11-001?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Atkins, what's your vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Consella?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you. The next series of policy items are reviews of proposed revisions for which we're not asking your approval this evening, but providing an overview of the proposed revisions. And so, the first one would be that we are recommending proposed revisions to policy P6-09-001, student insurance. Mrs. Gumpel?
Yes, and if you don't mind, I'd like to just restate that these policies, as Dr. Cashwell said, are the result of ongoing work of the policy committee. And as we embarked on the first major policy review with a formalized policy committee in process, we established that our purpose was to ensure that our policies reflect current legislation and practices, are easy to understand, they align with VSBA policies where feasible or available, and last but not least, are equitable and inclusive, which means to provide guidance with regard to equity and inclusivity, we utilize a rubric that was approved by Dr. Monica Mans, the Chief of Equity Diversity and Opportunity, who's also a member of our policy committee. And with that said, I'll move on. So, the policy P6-09-001 has been reviewed and updated with very minor edits. We changed the word from pupils to students, again, just throughout our policy to be consistent. And we also removed the reference to student athletes in this particular policy because student athletes is covered under our VHSL policy. So, the revision has been posted for public comment and is presented for your review this evening, and we'll be seeking your approval of these policies in August.
Mrs. Gumpel, before you, as you go through each of these, if you could just pause for a moment after each one, and that way, if a board member has a question about it, they can ask you, and then if no questions come up, just we'll move forward.
Absolutely. Any questions for student insurance? Okay, the next one is P6-09-002, health services. So, for that policy, scoliosis education and screening has not been a function of school health services for approximately 10 years, per Ms. Gilbert, School Health Services Supervisor. So, that has been removed, as well as a statement reflecting the fact that school nurses work in collaboration with student physicians, has been added. So, the wording has been changed also to clarify the number and type of trained staff in each school building, again, for clarity. And this policy revision has been posted for public comment and presented for your review this evening. Do you have any questions?
I have a comment. I have a comment.
Okay.
I'd like for the board members to, our nurses have been pretty vocal with us, and as you know, Mrs. Ogborne and I sit on the policy committee. And when we went through this policy, something that jumped out to me that I would like for you to look at during this comment period is nurse, the duties of a nurse, that their duties include other duties as told by the principal. I was, I'm asking you to consider the language of health-related duties, if you would. That's all I have.
I'm going to jump in as well, Mrs. Consella, since you and I have, through the committee, have talked about this, that one of our concerns is that if we leave it this way, that others' duties as assigned by the principal, that, for example, a school nurse could be assigned a non-health-related task that would pull them away from their duties in the clinic, or, I mean, and it has been known to happen, for example, that a, that the nurse oftentimes, being in close proximity to the office, would be asked to cover phone answering and things like that. And so, you know, we have worked long and hard to get our nurses up to the level of registered nurse, and we want to respect their position. So, I would be absolutely in favor of adding the word health-related, you know, duties as assigned by the principal. For example, you can imagine that on field day, they would add support for students who are outside participating in field day, and somebody falls and gets hurt, you know, those kinds of things. You're not normally outside with students, but those kinds of things could happen. So, I would like to add, agree with Ms. Consella, let's add the word health-related duties in there.
Yeah, Ms. Consella, Mrs. Ogborne's comments are right on point with the notes that I had made. I would like us to reevaluate that last sentence of the policy, the clinic attendants and school nurses perform such other duties as directed by the principal. You know, we want our school nurses to be able to focus their time on student health. And last year, because of legislation, we put the 80% on school counselors to be in direct service to our students. And I'm wary about putting a quantitative measure on it because it's just one more thing to track and one more thing to do. But in the same light as that, I would like us to make sure that our school nurses are able to concentrate their time and their efforts on providing health services to our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Atkins, did you have any input on that?
No. Mrs. Ogborne, Mrs. Consella, and Mrs. Shea, you have covered it.
Okay, thank you. So, board members, we, based on input, and it seems we have come to a consensus on this, so we're directing Mrs. Gumpel to add that word health as it goes out there for public comment, that we would have health-related. I don't have, I can't see the policy anymore, but does it seem, Mrs. Gumpel, that health-related duties as.
Yes.
Assigned by the principal?
I think we can certainly make that addition, and I would want to leverage our human resources expertise and their staff to make sure that that would cover it in their mind, based on what your intent is as a board. I think your intent is loud and clear, and so, we want to make sure we use the right phraseology. And I think what you suggest will likely do it, but would certainly want to leverage their support, I mean, their guidance, and then get your support on the wording before we put it out.
Okay, board members, would we feel more comfortable reviewing this policy again with the new language added before we put it out for review? At our, we could review it at our next meeting and then start the 30-day clock for public comment and review it and approve it after that? Or are we okay with letting the staff just want to give direction as we intend?
I'd like to see it.
Okay, so, if you would bring this back with new language at our next meeting, and then we'll review it again.
Will do. Thank you.
Need everybody's approval?
Thank you. That way, we can accurately capture your intent with language.
All righty, thank you.
Okay, the next policy, P6-09-010, driver education certificates. So, since students no longer present the DEC-1 card to DMV, that has been removed from our policy. Again, we're trying to update and align with current practices. So, licenses are now presented at an assigned date with the Henrico County Juvenile Court within 100 days. So, this has been posted for public comment and for your review this evening. Do you have any questions on this one?
Any questions? Okay, let's keep going.
Okay, P6-12-003, clubs of student, clubs and student organizations. Since students do not create constitutions for clubs or organizations, that statement has been removed from policy. And the word goal has replaced the word aim, as we felt like that was a better, a more clear statement of what an organization is for. So, that has been posted for public comment. Those are very minor changes. Do you have any questions on that, on those changes?
I have some questions around the policy, not explicitly what we changed, but some of the other context of the policy, if that's okay?
Okay, Mrs. Shea, go right ahead.
When we look at bullet B in the policy, which I'll just read part of it, it says, "All student organizations shall be allowed to meet on school premises during non-instructional times, which should include activity periods." I know in practice, from having been a high school teacher and been the SDA sponsor, that often class officers and SDA officers, they have, they call it a study hall, but it's essentially, they're all scheduled for the study hall so they can work on, you know, various tasks that have to do with their organization. And so, I just want to make sure that that practice is in compliance with the policy, and if we do need to amend the policy wording accordingly to allow that to occur.
And I'm going to interrupt just one moment. Our chair is back, so we're going to turn the meeting back over to Reverend Cooper to manage. Reverend Cooper, we are on item, I can't see it anymore, it's gone, but we are on item
5.14, moving through the proposed revisions to policies, and Sherri Gumpel is leading us through those probably until we get to 5.20.
I'm there, thank you, Madam Superintendent.
So, if I understand your question correctly, Mrs. Shea, you're saying that we want to make sure that our policy here, as it's written, also reflects our practice in schools, is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what I will do is, during this review period, I will also reach out to our schools, and that would be middle schools and, well, secondary schools primarily, just to get, garner that information for you.
I know that, and student, I don't, I don't know if student government falls under, you know, I know there's a separate bullet for student government, so I don't know if it falls under clubs and organizations or not, but I know for a fact that officers of student government meet during study hall, which could or could not, I mean, I guess that's, maybe our legal people maybe should chime in, but could or could not be considered instructional time because it is during the instructional day. So, I just want to make sure that really our policy is act. So I just want to make sure that really our policy is accurate to, I have no problem with the practice that's occurring, I just want to make sure the policy is accurate around that.
Right, okay, point is taken. I will get clarification on that.
And then the other, the other point about this policy, as I was reading it, you know, it says, it has a lot of requirements for our clubs and student organizations, but it doesn't really address if students kind of created an unofficial club, you know, like to possibly get around some of these policies. I don't know if that relates to the sorority and fraternity in P six dash 12 dash zero zero four, I don't know if that's covered there, but I just kind of wanted to put that on your radar screen.
Okay, okay, I will, so what I'll do is I'll work with our, with our attorneys on that also, to ask about that, to get, gain some advice on that.
Great, thank you, that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you, okay. The next one is P six dash 12 dash zero zero eight, trips overnight. Basically, just the word pupil has been changed to students to ensure consistency throughout our policy. I won't bring those to you every time, but I did want you to have an idea of the kinds of changes that we're making when they're very minimal like that. Do you have any questions on that? Okay. The next one is P six dash 12 dash zero one one, selection of members for certain student groups. Hemarico County Public Schools no longer utilizes a separate Student Activities Advisors Handbook, so that statement has been removed. H C P S only uses the Virginia High School League Handbook, so the policy has been revised to reflect those changes. Are there any questions?
I did have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Alicia.
Can you help me understand just the title, selection of members for certain student groups? What, what does that mean?
So, it's, it's how, if in a building, how in a school does, who is eligible to be able to be selected for any kind of a student group? And it's saying that each school will develop procedures, such as team athletes, cheerleaders, band, band front, following guidelines, as in the Virginia High School League Handbook. So the Virginia High School League really provides the guidelines, and that's one of the reasons that we're referencing that now, is that basically, we're saying that this is the guide that we use in all of our selection of those student groups.
So, so the word certain, I'll just be quite honest, bothers me, I'm trying to digest, what's the point of even saying certain in that title?
I would have, oh, do you want to go ahead? Go ahead, and I don't, and legal counsel may want to weigh in on that as well. I would imagine it's to point to the specific student organizations or student groups that are then referenced later, but rather than just any student grouping, like assigning classes or that sort of thing.
Because it's reference, we specify the groups we're talking about, right?
So define it rather than using the word certain, and I think that's how it's, it's been titled in policy, but certainly, I think what you're suggesting is that the term certain in the title isn't clear on what certain groups mean.
I'd like to take a look at that legally.
Okay.
I mean, it may be nothing there, but, but I really would, Mrs. Gumpel, like you to just take a look, because we are specifying the groups in it, and I just want to just get a little bit better understanding as to why we have to use that word certain in that title. And Dr. Cashwell, I hear what you're saying as well, but I just would really like for us to take a little bit of a deeper dive into that.
Thank you. I will definitely research that and come back to you. Thank you.
Um, I, sorry, I have one around that. What is a band front?
I think a band front is like a drum line. That's the way I would interpret that.
So my suggestion, so my suggestion would be, I, to better define that, you know, my, my husband and I were both drum majors of the marching band, we are band people, and neither one of us know what the band front is. And so I figure if none of us know what the band front is, it needs to be more clear in policy, whether that's the drum line, or the colored guard, or the marching band in general, but it, it seems to be an archaic term that no one really, I even called a band director friend of mine, and I said, "What's a, what's a band front?" And he goes, "I don't know." So I think in, in light of updating our policies, we need to figure out what that's intended to be, and get some, get some clearer language around it.
Absolutely, and that is the point of part of this update, is to make sure that our language is clear, so I will make sure we get that straight.
Got it, and that's my only comment for that one. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we're going to move on to P six dash 17 dash zero zero one, awards. The use of the word student again replaces pupil and clarifies that eligible students shall be fully informed of awards. The policy revision is posted for public comment, and it's presented for your review this evening. Do you have any questions about this one? All right, moving on to P six dash 19 dash zero 17, students who drop out. Since H C P S seeks to prevent students from dropping out of school, the statement prior to graduation, we felt was unnecessary and thus removed. Otherwise, the policy was reworded slightly to be clear and concise without substantive change. So does anyone have any questions on this policy? Okay, thank you. The last, we have some policies that the committee reviewed, along with the expert and attorneys, and we decided there were no changes needed at this time. And the listing is there, I think you see those up on the screen, so quite a few that were looked at and reviewed per legislation and per our policy review, but not changed. Are there any questions around those?
I have questions about three of the policies. If anyone else has a question about a specific policy I'm addressing, please feel free to chime in before I go to the next one. The first one is P six dash oh nine dash zero zero three, communicable and bloodborne contagious diseases. So the, the first bullet point, A there about communicable diseases, just says, "Any person suffering with a contagious or infectious disease should be excluded from public schools while in that condition." I know we have more specific guidelines that we provide our parents on when students should or shouldn't come to school with having a fever or whatever. I know that's going to be of, of increased concern and increased importance this next school year, is, is really figuring out how to monitor this. And so I just pose, you know, just as a question for the policy committee to consider, do we want to make that policy more specific?
So part of what we have to do for our plan for reopening schools, there are some policies that, or practices or procedures that we are required to provide to the state. So that would be, one, health policies are going to be some that we're going to have to look at. So it may be that it's added, that this is added to or modified, or it might be a separate standing policy. But that is going to be addressed, it just, we're, we're still waiting on some of those, that guidance, and we're doing some of that work, researching at this moment, but we're not quite prepared for that just yet. But we definitely wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that the committee, as, as the policy was written, of course, we've done this work over the last six months, that we didn't feel there were any changes to that as it was written at the time. But there will be some coming forth about changes for health concerns.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mr. Anderson.
Ms. Shay, I just want to respond to make sure that is a direct statutory provision, comes straight from the Code of Virginia. So that's why it's in there, there is, there's not additional language to that, it's essentially just a quote from the code.
Okay.
Just wanted you to be, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, my next policy is a policy, P six dash oh nine dash oh one nine, which is lactation support. And this is actually one that's really personal to me. I returned to work as a young mom who was breastfeeding and, you know, and pumping while I was teaching, and I pumped in a storage room, in a storage closet in my classroom, and that was compared to some other teacher pumping situations, I mean, that was a really good getup. I had a, a private closet that I could close the door to. And, you know, as we work to, you know, keep, keep our, retain our teachers, and, you know, particularly our teachers with new families, this is, this is a really important thing. It's, it's hard to make your schedule work and have space, and there's a lot of considerations around this for our new moms that are teaching. One specific addition I would like to suggest to this policy is it says, "Every school should make available a room for any enrolled student who is a mother to take a break during, breaks of reasonable length during the school day to express milk to feed her child until it reaches," when, oh, sorry, it says that they should designate a room, not a restroom. I think you need to, I would like us to add as well to that, that it not be the clinic, because of the obvious amount of germs that are in the air and that sort of thing, for the same reason why you wouldn't want to be pumping in a restroom. I don't think our, I, I don't think they should be required to pump in a clinic either.
Okay. I've made that note, thank you.
And then the last one is just to make sure our prac, again, our practices and policy are aligned. It is P six dash 14 dash zero zero two, and I'm quickly trying to scroll to it, but it has to do with solicitation of students and fundraising. And part of this, it says, let me scroll down, that funds raised in, excuse me, sorry, I'm, uh, funds raised in the name of a specific school group must be used to support that group as a whole, not that, to support individuals in the group. And so I think we need to check with our schools and make sure that that is the practice. I'm kind of anecdotally aware of some situations where students do fundraising to like offset the cost of a chorus trip, or a band, you know, or some of those big-ticket opportunities for our students. And so that seems to be in direct conflict to this policy. And so whatever we decide is how we want to move forward, we need to make sure our practice and our policy align.
I noted, thank you.
And that is the end of my policy comments.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Thank you.
All right, I think that concludes our policies. If there are no more questions for that. All right, so for the next item, I'm recommending that the school board accept the grant award valued at $12,500 from the Fishing Education Foundation and American Sport Fishing Association.
Can I have a motion to accept the Fishing Education Foundation, American Sport Fishing Association grant, please?
So move.
Then move by, Ms. Shay is there, second?
Second.
And, take it by Ms. Atkins, roll call vote, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Consala?
Aye.
Ms. Ogbonn?
Aye.
Ms. Shay?
Aye.
And I vote out of the eyes, have it, the grant award has been accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Next, I'm recommending the school board accept the grant funding from Share Our Strength and the Virginia No Kid Hungry Campaign in the amount of $15,000.
Can I have a motion in a second, please, accept the grant?
So move.
Then move by Ms. Ogbonn is her second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Consala, roll call vote, Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Consala?
Aye.
Ms. Ogbonn?
Aye.
Ms. Shay?
Aye.
And I vote out of the eyes, have it, the grant award has been accepted.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending that the school board approve the 2020, 2021 State and Federal Grant Funding in the amount of $16,767,883.
Can I have a motion in a second, please, to accept the grant funding?
So move.
Then move by Mrs. Atkins is her second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shay, roll call vote, Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Consala?
Aye.
Ms. Ogbonn?
Aye.
Ms. Shay?
Aye.
And I vote out of the eyes, have it, the grant award has been approved.
Thank you. The next item consists of a review of the proposed revisions to the 2020, 2021 Code of Student Conduct, and that includes revisions to our dress code, as that's been something we've heard a great deal from students in the community about, as well as some other revisions to align our reporting codes with those recommended by the Virginia Department of Education. And Dr. Noel is here to provide us an overview of the proposed revisions to, again, the 2020, 2021 Code of Student Conduct, for which we'll be seeking your approval at a subsequent board meeting. Dr. Noel? Dr. Grant, by chance? Do you know, do we have anyone?
Here, we were texting.
Yeah.
Let me see, can I?
If, if for some reason we've lost connectivity, I would either invite you to proceed with presenting the presentation, or I'm happy to assist in that endeavor, however, it works best.
Okay, he's having difficulty with his computer. I can get started if you like.
That'd be fine, and I'm happy to assist as well. I know we're all very familiar with the content of the presentation, so.
Okay, the only thing is, I cannot control his, the PowerPoint.
I believe that Kathy and Debbie may be controlling the PowerPoint, so if they would like to go ahead and advance to the next slide?
Yes. The 2021 Code of Student Conduct, there, there were two major substantial changes to the, to the conduct. One, the dress code. As you know, we have received numerous feedback from our stakeholders, our parents, our teachers, even professors on the college level, reviewing our code of conduct and giving us the opportunity to like take into account everything they said. The second major change in the student code of conduct is the student behavior and administrative response to the S bar code. We, as a district, started using some of the S bar codes years ago, more of a preventative measure in our code of conduct. So we're taking proactive approaches when we are disciplining our students.
Okay, next slide.
Next slide, please.
And you might go ahead and advance it all the way for each slide, just for Dr. Grant's benefit, since she's not prepared with it in front of her. Thank you.
I'm here, if you guys can hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, if we could go back, I'm gonna try to take control, Kathy? I do apologize, I was on the link, it wouldn't load for me.
I understand, thank you for jumping in. So I think we were just finishing the slide that overviewed the two categories of changes, and we were launching into the beginning of the dress code piece.
All right, let me see if I have control. So currently, our, our code says hoods and hats on the face, and what I proposed is proposing adding on heads to that, that would distinct between being able to wear a hoodie in school versus having a hood on your head.
Dr. Noah, can I interrupt you real quick?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the slide prior to that, please?
Yes.
We did not go that slide, thank you, sir.
Okay, well, what this is saying, is in response to the various of the current dress code, we feel that we could better align to truly meet our four cornerstones, and as a result, we would remove any subjective, gender-specific, or culturally specific language from the code of student conduct. Furthermore, we recognize that once these changes go into effect, it will be important to continue to hear from the community about the changes, and specifically how these changes impact students. So because of that, we would develop the dress code to get further feedback from our students, and we plan to distribute this survey at the end of the 2021 school year. Also, actually, to keep in mind that the goal here was to remove and or modify all subjective, gender-specific, and culturally-specific language. Our code currently says, students may not wear the following Um, our code currently says, uh, students may not wear the following items unless otherwise stated. And again, the first one, uh, was hoods, hats, face masks. And because, um, of the COVID pandemic, we're anticipating that students will come back to school with masks, and we don't want the mask to cover more than the mouth and the nose. The next one, we would remove, um, the following, because this is, uh, somewhat culturally, uh, sensitive as well as gender-specific. Moving on, sunglasses, unless prescribed by physician, would remain the same. The next bullet point, we remove dresses skirts, um, because of the gender-specific and just change it to clothing might reach the tip of the thumb when placed at the sides. Next bullet point, we've, uh, proposed adding that negatively represents a religion, ethnicity, culture, gender, or people, or that could cause substantial disruption to the learning environment. Eyeglasses chains, that will remain the same. The next three will, uh, remain the same, as they are not subjective, gender-specific or culturally-specific. The next one, uh, we decided to propose to add revealing the midriff to this section. And the last two, um, would remain the same. And, and closing it out, the following would be, uh, we propose removing due to the, uh, gender-specific or ethnic-specific language. Now we'll move to the Student Behavior and Administrative Response, or Sbar. For the 2021 school year, all of Virginia's public schools were supposed to discontinue using the Discipline, Crime and Violence, or DCV, reporting codes in favor of the Sbar reporting codes. However, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the VDOE, uh, is delaying the full rollout of Sbar. So for the 2021 school year, the DCV data collection will be used to meet reporting requirements to measure disproportionality, persistently dangerous schools, and safe and gun-free schools. The new Sbar collection will commence for the 2122 school year. DCV will be retired when Sbar is fully implemented. To be aligned with the VDOE, our proposed 2021 Code of Student Conduct should use the language of Sbar. However, for data collection purposes, we shall continue to use DCV until 2122 school year. Next, we'll talk about Sbar rationale. For the new members of the board, in the 1516 school year, we underwent a shift in philosophy regarding unwanted student behavior. We moved to a more positive preventative approach with more discipline and less punishment. However, research shows that discipline disparity for students with disabilities and African-American students compared to non-disabled white students is still a cause for concern. As a result, school divisions across the United States are shifting from a reactive punitive approach regarding inappropriate student behavior to a more proactive preventative approach. This shift in philosophy is due to continued disparity in that student discipline. Because of that, it is necessary to keep positive instructional approaches to behavior at the forefront to help ensure that schools are safe, supportive, and equitable learning environments. And also, we will introduce and train HCPS personnel to the new Student Behavior and Administrative Response Reporting Codes. Next, we'll take a look at the five behavior headings. The following behavior headings are designed to recognize the impact student behavior has on school environment and on learning. And members of the board, I propose adding an Sbar crosswalk to the 2021 Code of Student Conduct. Let's take a look at what we currently have. You see here, we have the, uh, discipline and crime and violence codes in red. The crosswalk, uh, Sbar crosswalk we're proposing would show the administrators where the Sbar codes correspond with the DCV codes. And we propose for the code of student conduct to either have the, uh, Sbar codes in a different color or underline them for greater distinguishability for our school-based administrators as well as our schoolteachers. And at this time, I will answer any questions that you may have. And again, I do apologize for the technical difficulties.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. Do any members of our board have questions related to the, um, Student Code of Conduct proposed changes that either Dr. Noel or I can answer?
Mrs. Shea?
Oh, you knew I'd have a question. All right. Um, one of the bullets, just a suggested edit, one of the bullets says, um, clothing that is see-through, revealing the midriff or resembles undergarments. And the next bullet of the dress code says, clothing that reveals the midriff. So I feel like the midriff part is a bit redundant, and the, uh, top, the first of those two bullets could just be edited to say, clothing that is see-through or resembles undergarments, since the midriff's covered next.
Okay.
And to your suggestion, it might be we still leave the while sitting or standing piece, because while the garment itself may cover the midriff, the idea is if you were to begin moving that, it might expose. But I, I think you're right, those could be combined.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't, I don't think we should change that second bullet at all. I think we can just, out of the, uh, the first of those two bullets, take out revealing the midriff, since it's in the second one.
Yeah, I think, uh, it originally wasn't in, and, uh, it, it was noted that it might not be specific enough without it. So I think we can work on, can continue to work on that.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Shea.
That's all.
Okay, next, uh, Mrs., uh, Ms. Consella?
I had a question, um, about the sunglasses. Even outside, and for example, PE, no sunglasses, just for clarification. Unless prescribed by a doctor?
Would it be better if I said sunglasses worn inside of school building unless prescribed by physician?
Well, I, I guess I, yes, I, I'm trying to understand the intent of, of that, and I missed it in my prior review.
The intent had, the intent had been indoors, but as it's written, um, you're right, it doesn't specify that, though I don't know that anyone would be enforcing the code outdoors to provide specificity. There's certainly not, not a reason we couldn't clarify that.
If we could clarify, I'd appreciate it, just so there's consistency throughout our schools as to how we apply policy.
Yes, ma'am. Will do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Consella. Ms. Atkins?
No, I don't have any comments or questions at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Ogborne?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Dr. Cashwell?
All right. I think that concludes our information related to changes, uh, for the Student Code of Conduct, and we'll, uh, again, um, take your suggestions to make further revision and present it once more for your approval at a subsequent board meeting. Thank you, Dr. Noel.
Thank you.
All right. For the next item, I'm recommending the school board approve the proposed tuition rates that have previously been shared with the board for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. I'm gonna ask for motion in a second. Can I receive one, please?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ogborne. Roll call. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote out of the eyes. Have it. The 202021 tuition rates have been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The next items are consent items, and so they can be taken in a block. For the first item, I'm requesting acceptance of the monthly financial statement and budgetary status report for the month ending May 31, 2020. Also, the acceptance of monthly financial statement for school nutrition services for the month ending May 31, 2020. The approval of personnel items. The adoption of a resolution authorizing the superintendent to accept or reject resignations after June 15th. The adoption of a resolution permitting the superintendent to reassign teachers, assistant principals, and principals within the division for the 2020, 2021 school year. Adoption of resolution appointing fiscal agent and deputy fiscal agent for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you so much, um, Dr. Cashwell. Can I have a, receive a motion in a second, please, for the consent items?
Mr., uh, Reverend Cooper Chair, I have one comment. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Shea.
All right, uh, Dr. Cashwell, when I look at, I believe it's, uh, P, or sorry, nine dot oh five, the, um, permitting the superintendent to reassign teachers. Um, I am, I am comfortable with authorizing you to do that without some sort of formal vote from the board, but I would ask that you provide, um, the board member whose, um, district it is, advance notice of that. Uh, because during the school year, it can be so disruptive to make those changes, that the board member of the district get advance notice, uh, and be brought into that conversation.
I certainly could provide that information.
All right, and now I'm ready, I'm ready to move on. I make a motion for the consent items.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Um, it's been moved by Mrs. Shea. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Consella. Roll call vote, Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote out of the eyes. Have it. The consent items have been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. That concludes items from the superintendent.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent. Um, want to briefly speak on the public forum. Um, citizens had until 9:30 this morning to submit comments for the board's review using a link on the HCPS website. Um, a significant number of citizens took advantage of that opportunity, and we sincerely appreciate their input. Um, comments were compiled and provided to us prior to the start of today's meeting. And those comments have also been posted in board docs, so that you can peruse, and you can see the comments for yourself. Next item on our agenda, uh, is the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ogborne. Roll call vote, Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye, the ayes. Have it. Um, the minutes have been approved. Uh, board members, are there any old business?
Uh, Chairman Cooper, I do have, uh, some old business I'd like to talk about.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Atkins?
Um, the first topic that I'd like to talk about under old business is redistricting. I would like for, um, our board to consider adding redistricting, uh, to an upcoming agenda. I feel very strongly, uh, that we need to have conversation on next steps and do it in a very transparent way, so that we can do our best to get this right. And also coupled with, in that same discussion, uh, talking about equity across Henrico. Uh, and so I strongly urge, uh, each of you to, um, consider, uh, adding that to, uh, our upcoming meeting and being prepared to engage in a conversation around where we are, where we could potentially be, and couple that with equity. The next, uh, topic under old business I want to talk about is mascots. Um, in late February, we had students come to us and, uh, do a, a presentation on why they believe that their mascot needs to be changed. I do want to give an update on that. I want to thank, uh, Dr. Mans, um, for her work in moving that work forward. So for those that are listening, I want you to stay tuned, because progress is coming. And it will happen. More information, uh, will be provided to work to get more feedback and, and move forward, and in a way that's transparent. Uh, so I want to just share that with the public, that more information and actions are coming. And then, uh, lastly, under old business, I want to talk about communication. Uh, I know these are not normal times. I want to apologize to those that perhaps may have been trying to reach out to me via email. I want you to know that it is always my intention to be responsive to you. I value your time, because your time is something that you cannot get back. So I need you to know, um, that I do value that. And I will ask, um, that you use the many communication methods that, that I am about to share with you, so that I can ensure that I get back to you as quickly as I possibly can. If you are an email person, email me, please. My email address is E, is, uh, A S A T K I N S at henrico.k12.v a.us. If you want to have a conversation over the phone, phone, I, I truly welcome that. My phone number is 804-652-3808. If you want FaceTime with me and engaging in a conversation where you can see me and hear me, please know that I have monthly coffee and conversations. I urge you to join me in the conversation in that particular communication method. I also have an e-newsletter. If you want to learn more about, uh, the actions in the Verena District, you certainly can sign up, uh, to receive a copy of the newsletter. And then lastly, to the teachers and staff that have reached out to me, I want you to know I am in the process of putting together a form, just so that you can share your thoughts with me in a very comfortable, safe way. And so more information on that is coming. I care about our HCPS staff. I want you to be okay. And so more information is going to come on this form that I am putting together. But if you cannot wait, please continue to call me, email me. And, and if you see me in the grocery store, don't be hesitant to pull me to the side to talk, um, because I'm looking forward to that. Chairman Cooper? The floor is yours.
Chairman Cooper, I have, uh, two things to piggyback on, on Ms. Atkins' old business.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to go first? Uh, we can't hear you.
Are we going to address what Mrs. Atkins said before we move on to?
Yeah, I had, um, some comments about her old business.
Uh, okay.
Is that okay?
Miss?
Um, in terms, uh, concerning Ms. Atkins' request to, uh, discuss redistricting, I would like to add and ask that as part of our discussion about redistricting, that the board include a discussion of the grandfathering policy, once the new timeline is determined, especially if that timeline has less than one year between our vote and the implementation. Uh, so just a, a, a broader expansion of our redistricting discussion. Uh, and then I also have a mascot update myself, but I will say that it is technically new business, so I will save that for new business. Mrs. Ogborne?
Um, I didn't have a comment, other than I, I just defer to the chair to handle Mrs. Atkins' list before we move forward.
Right. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. So it has been, it's been duly noted, the items that Mrs. Atkins would like for us to, um, put on an agenda for another meeting, and so we will definitely acquiesce to her request.
Excuse me, if, if I could have a turn to speak to what Ms. Atkins said, I'd appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
You can.
Um, uh, Ms. Atkins, I appreciate you, uh, bringing up the points that you brought up. I'd like to, for those listening, that the board needs to talk about a plan. That, I, I don't want to mislead whoever's listening, that we just, the board has not visited this topic since April 6th, when we paused the redistricting 2021 due to, uh, the governor's guidance. So I just wanted to highlight that, that we are talking about, um, that we have to get together and work out a plan. And I'd also like to ask the superintendent if, as the board, um, begins to look at redistricting, again, that she provide us with some of the specialty center information and that we did not, uh, have access to before, and the committee certainly didn't have access to. And that's all I had to Ms. Atkins' business, old business.
Mr. Chairman, if I might respond to the requests?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Consella, your, your request to have information related to the specialty centers is noted, and I want to clarify the specifics of your request, because I believe you have things like enrollment of specialty centers and locations of specialty centers, and you're seeking information related to general programmatic relevance and any potential recommendations related to specialty center, uh, relevance. I want to just revisit that request, so that I'm providing you with the information you would like.
Yes, I am. You, you've understood my request, uh, perfectly. As we've, um, we've, I've put forward an interest in understanding enrollment, but now I want to but now I want to understand our programming and its relevance as to how we may move forward or what's necessary for us to move forward and what our specialty centers look like programmatically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So does anyone else have any old business? Okay, hearing none. New business, before I open that up to everyone, let me introduce this one piece of new business. First and foremost, we need to select a delegate, an alternate delegate to the 2020 V S B A Delegate Assembly. And so I'm hoping that I can have a nomination for a delegate and a nomination for an alternate delegate to the 2020 V S B A Delegate Assembly.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mrs. Consella as our delegate.
Ms. Ogborne has nominated Ms. Consella for our delegate. Are there any other nominees for the delegate? Hearing none, that nomination is closed. Is there a nomination for an alternate delegate?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Shea.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Is there another nomination? Hearing none, the nomination is closed. We have nominated for delegate Ms. Kristi Consella to nominate for an alternate delegate, Ms. Marcy Shea. Can I have a motion to have the delegate be Ms. Consella and the alternate be Mrs. Shea? One second.
Go ahead, Ms. Atkins, sorry.
Moved by Ms. Atkins. I'm assuming Ms. Ogborne, you want to second?
Sure, absolutely.
Did I make you do it? Were you going to do it?
No, I was going to, one or the other. Yeah.
So it's been moved and properly second. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
And I vote aye to eyes have it. Ms. Consella will serve as our delegate and Mrs. Shea will serve as alternate delegate to the 2020 V S B A Delegate Assembly. Want to thank both of them for representing our board and the school division at the assembly. Want to go ahead and is there any other new business?
Chair Cooper, I'd like to present new business.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Consella?
Yes, I'd like to firstly thank all of our community members, stakeholders, parents, teachers, staff, for all of the tremendous feedback we've received, whether depending on the topic, it could have been S R Os, it could be back to school. What a great job we're doing. It could have been about graduation. I just want to thank everyone for the communication. As I learned the other evening when I participated in a community conversation with Mrs. Atkins, I learned, or I guess validated, the need that we were feeling to better connect with our community and constituents and their need also to connect back with us. So given that, I have two things. One, actually, three things. One, I'd like to ask other board members for what, for an update of what's been going on in your community, since we feel so disconnected and we like to give updates to constituents. And then two, in response to our constituents and their need for connecting with us during this time, I'd like to ask for a school board town hall during the month of July so that we can better gather community feedback with constituents, constituent groups. I think this is something that the public will be receptive to. And then three, I'd like to ask the superintendent for a comprehensive list of schools and school names and the history of such, as well as the mascots and other things. Of course, that's dealt with at the school level, but I'd like for a comprehensive document to be created and available to us and to the public, if that's possible.
Okay, so let's tackle what you said first. Madam Superintendent, are you able to acquiesce to Ms. Consella's response to the question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In response to Mrs. Consella's request to receive that comprehensive listing of school names, their associated histories and mascots, yes, we will compile and provide that, make it available to the board and the public. And I think we there have, yeah, yeah, thank you.
And, and Ms. Consella, what we can do is we can work with the superintendent to schedule what you've requested in the month of July. So let us work with her on that and then we can inform the community in regards to when that'll take place.
And then lastly, I would like for each board member, as I know each of you had had different things going on in your district that I think the community needed to receive an update on since we last met. So I yield the floor. Thank you.
When you say giving update, what, in what method?
Well, for example, Reverend Cooper, you had a call to action forum. I know Mrs. Ogborne has been talking about the name of Jackson Davis in her community. And I know Mrs. Shea has been talking about the Freeman mascot in her community. And Mrs. Atkins already addressed the John Rolfe old business, which is still current business, but she's already discussed that. So if you three wouldn't mind updating board members and the community, whoever's watching, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, to your point, thank you for just broaching that. I did host the forum online in regards to a community conversation around policing our schools. And the subtitle was the perception of safety. It was a dialogue with Assistant Chief Police, Chief Tony and Officer Banks, who oversees our S R Os, just to start the conversation. Because you can't talk about police reform in our country, given what's going on, and not speak to the fact that we are going to look at the current state of our S R Os, the relationship with our schools and what it might look like going forward. As with anything that's actionable, it starts first with a conversation. So it's, that conversation is still on my Facebook page. If people want to go see it, they can. My page is public, so it is accessible. Ms. Ogborne, you want to go next and then Ms. Shea?
Absolutely. I have, I do have information I wanted to share on Jackson Davis Elementary School. I have received, and as has the board, a number of inquiries about the name of that school. And there is a common misconception as to who the school is named after. Indeed, it is named after Henry Jackson Davis, who served as a former superintendent of Henrico County Schools in the early 1900s, from 1905 to 1909. And Dr. Davis was, I would say, innovative educator. He was, his work, an integral part of planning in the early stages of the United Negro College Fund. He worked to ensure equal access to high-quality schools for all children and was much beloved by a lot of people who, he made a difference in their lives. And I just wanted to make sure that people that might be listening and can share that Henrico does not have any schools named after Confederate leaders. And people assume that Jackson Davis is named after Confederate leaders, which they are not. But I also wanted to thank Mr. Janks for getting the word out about this. We have Principal Bonner, who is being very responsive to the concerns of the community as well as parents, and she's reached out to people directly. And the Henrico citizen was very nice to put an article in their paper about the accuracy of the name. So just wanted to get that out there and thank you very much. Uh-oh.
Did we lose him again?
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Ogborne. Ms. Shea, can you give us a mascot update, please?
Absolutely. As many of you are aware, Freeman High School is represented by the mascot, the Rebels. When the school was opened in 1954, it also had Dixie as its fight song and a Confederate soldier icon to represent the mascot. Over the last 60 years, the fight song and icon were changed not to have ties with the Confederacy, but the mascot name Rebels has continued. Over the last decade, the Rebel has been reframed within the school to signify rebels who challenge the status quo, challenge injustice, and change the world. I recognize, however, the history of the school's founding during the Civil Rights Movement and the following decades of symbolism, however, framed the mascot in a very different light. The conversation about reassessing the Freeman mascot dates back at least a decade to when I served on the faculty at Freeman. In the last few weeks, we, as a division, have had increased fervor to consider the language and symbolism we utilize, if the, excuse me, if the language and symbolism we utilize reflect our core values as a division. This, along with hundreds of emails the principal of Freeman and I received on the matter, have led to an official inquiry into the Freeman mascot. I encourage you to visit the website freemanmascot.info for a message from the principal and an opportunity to share your feedback on the matter. Under the policies in Chapter Four, the school board has the authority to name schools, but it is our practice for schools to choose mascots and school colors. For example, when Byrd Middle School was renamed to Quiocelyn Middle School a few years ago, the school board voted to rename the school and chose the new name. However, the principal, who's our very own Mrs. Gumpel, and we, I so appreciate all of her expertise and insight on this matter, collected the community input and the student input in order to select the mascot. We, as a board, are going to continue that practice with the school and community-driven process in this matter. While the mantle of leadership of this rests on the school administration, I'm working closely with them to support the process and the conversations. Again, I encourage you to visit freemanmascot.info and submit your feedback. And that's kind of, that's the mascot update I have. But Reverend Cooper, I would like to add on just briefly to Ms. Consella's request for the town hall, which I think is a fantastic idea, and I look forward to participating in with all of you. In light of the volume of decisions and work around COVID considerations and opening school in the fall, I would like to make a motion to amend our calendar to include a work session in July.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Shea to amend our calendar and have a work session in July.
Second?
And it's been seconded by Mrs. Consella. With the roll call vote, Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Shea? And I vote aye to eyes have it. We're going to go ahead and have that in July.
And Chairman Cooper, I also want to have an opportunity to give a few more updates of what's going on over here in the Verona District. I do think it is important for me to share a little bit more of an update.
Please feel free.
Thank you so much. As was mentioned prior, I gave an update around John Rolfe Middle School. I think I speak well for the Verona District because I attended Fairfield Middle School. And while that's not in the Verona District, it certainly is on the cusp and sitting right on them. I will right alongside of Holland Springs High School, which I graduated from. And I'm a wonderful product of this community. And I want to just verbally say that I have a lot of people hurting. I have a lot of people who are looking for work. And I have a lot of children who are a little bit lost right now due to social distancing, isolation, and maybe a lot of kids playing Xbox and Playstation. But the truth is, they really want to be with another friend. And so there's been a wonderful coming together in the Verona District to try to bring unity, to try to help others heal, to pick my brain many times on what are some ideas that we can use to communicate, whether it's with the school board collectively or reaching out to myself and my colleagues. And so I'm going to give a couple of updates of some of the things that are to come versus what have been done. So on Friday, we're having a unity parade. That parade is specifically going to be for Holland Springs and Sandston. We are also with Mrs. Manson. I know that she, she's doing a call to prayer. This is going to be a vigil. And so where folks in the Verona District can come and pray. I think I made a little list here. Also, I have a nice amount of middle and high school students that have asked for some sort of form so that they can share how they're feeling, and they have some fantastic ideas. So we are in the process, for those parents that know a little bit about that and your child has come to you, know that that is valid. I am working on trying to find a way to bring our middle and high school students together so that they can share how their school year went and do that in a very, in a way that's social distancing. And so wanted to share that. And let's see, what else do I have here? Also, I know that there are right now two committees that are formed just around redistricting. And while in the past in the Verona District, it wasn't a large conversation because of the small recommendations that were made, I will share with you, it's a much larger conversation now. Those two committees that I am aware of are certainly more involved, engaged. And so it is going to be timely for us to start having conversations about redistricting, particularly around equity. Also, I'll mention pals as well, who are doing a phenomenal job for the Police Athletic League. And there's things to come with them on also trying to help with understanding what's going on with police brutality. I made a little list of Mrs. Consella since she made that request, and I just want to make sure I touched on what's to come here in the future. Also, I mentioned earlier about a teachers forum. I have had several staff members ask if I would be willing to get some of my training resources in. And so I'm going to partner with V C U to get several training resources in. I am in the process of trying to put a forum together to allow H C P S staff to share outside of an H C P S umbrella, unfiltered. I think that's probably what it's going to be called. So for those listening, that is to come. I just want to let each of you know that across the country, I know there's a lot of pain. I know there are a lot of ideas, but I know we also have to engage in these courageous conversations around race, injustice, police brutality, and education. And so I'm just sharing some of the things that we're doing out here in the Verona District. I think that is going to probably quadruple over time. My goal is to try to have some sort of unity parade, some, something that symbolizes hope over here in Verona. So that is just a recap of some of the things, Mrs. Consella, that's happening over here in my district.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Does anyone else have any more new business they'd like to share? Well, before we make the announcement of our next meeting date and adjournment, is Debbie able to, Debbie, were able to come on the screen? Can we see Ms. Ward?
I'm here.
Can we see your face?
The camera's on.
Well, so we want, this wonderful lady that you're looking at has served our school division. How long, Debbie?
Too, too long? A while.
Okay, well, tell me, give me the ears. Come on, don't be shy.
Twenty-one years.
Yes, ma'am. And your current position is what?
Clerk.
Well, this is our illustrious clerk, and she will be retiring. And we wanted to give her flowers while she was able to see them and smell them. And I know myself and all of my peers, and we are the better because of you. And so we want to just say thank you for your dedication, your commitment, for your support, and for your love of H C P S staff as well as students. and for your love of H C P S staff as well as students. Um, we could not do what we do without you. I just want you to know how grateful and thankful we are, and we wish that your next chapter would be your best chapter. And that's just a a picture of the flowers that she received, that she's able to see and smell. So Debbie, thank you so much. Does does anybody want to add anything else real quick?
Thank you.
Um, I I will, um
Yes, ma'am.
I have worked with Debbie for five and a half years, and it has been a pleasure every minute. I don't know anybody who's kinder, um, more meticulous and more dedicated to helping us do the work that we do, and we couldn't have done it without you. And I know that um you have trained Kathy well and will continue to do that. And I I am personally very jealous in a way. I I I, you will hear me say that more than once, but I uh just know that we will miss working with you tremendously. It is um, but I know you have a wonderful family you're going to get to spend a lot more time with, and we are just so appreciative of everything you've always done for us. You've been there for us.
Thank you.
In all circumstances.
Am I not? Thank y'all very much for everything. It's been an honor and a privilege.
Thank you. Well, um, last but certainly not least, we want to announce the the next meeting date. This this date will change once we um have a discussion about our July meeting. But as of right now, the school board's next scheduled meeting is Thursday, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty at one, um for which we hope to be back in our meeting location in the New Bridge Learning Center auditorium. The meeting time may be adjusted if needed. Until then, thank you so much, this meeting is adjourned.